Hey, folks. If the... If you guys have started the meeting, the Zoom for the city is still muted, so I cannot hear you.
Okay.
About now.
It is. We're trifle late. I apologize. It is... Well, that clock's off anyway. It's 6:01, and I'll call this meeting of the Berry City Council to order. This meeting is subject to Vermont's open meeting laws, and we do have an electronic options. I've been reminding folks, and Counselor Stockwell is joining us remotely, as is Counselor Wazak. And I'll remind folks, don't hesitate to poke me. I'm not used to remote meetings. So if someone has their hand up and I miss them, I'm not being impolite. I'm just being, you know, not paying attention, I guess. So, the meeting is called to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Manager?
Not for me, Mr. Manager.
Would you mind if we moved Item 8E, which is our FY '25 fee schedule? Would you mind if we moved that up to the consent agenda?
That's perfect.
Okay, then we'll do that. If there's no objection from council?
I have questions about it, so...
Yep, we can do that under consent, if it's okay.
Sure.
Yeah, sure thing. Counsel, any other adjustments to the agenda?
Not for tonight, Mr. Mayor, but I was thinking in the future, it might be good to have our... Unless I misread it, let me double check before I start actually talking. I was just thinking, it might be better to have our volunteer appointments as the first matter of new business moving forward, just to be respectful of other folks' time, so that they don't have to sit through a bunch of other city business. But understanding that some folks may be coming later today because they're later on the agenda.
No, no objection here. They should go... They're mostly reappointments, Counselor, so they should go pretty quickly. So if there's no objection from council, we're going to move Item 8D to 8A, and everything else will, of course, follow in order.
I have no objection. I would just ask that we hold space at the end if anyone is planning on coming later and make sure that we can double up there.
Oh, of course. We can... We'll be here as long as we need to be here. Okay, so that moves us away from adjustments to the agenda. Item 3 is Resolution 2024-10 in recognition of Pride Month. Would you be so kind, Madam Clerk?
Certainly. Berry City Resolution 2024-10, a resolution recognizing June as Pride Month in Berry City, whereas the first Gay Pride Day was celebrated in 1970 in New York as a declaration of the value, dignity, and right to belong of all lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer residents. And whereas, prior to and after the Stonewall riots of 1969, national prohibitions banned LGBTQ individuals from employment, marriage, and military service, and failed to protect them from discrimination. And whereas, LGBTQ individuals in the city of Berry and every other municipality in the state and in the nation were excluded and their history hidden. And whereas, the Center for Disease Control recognizes that LGBTQ teens are at higher risk to be the victims of violence and have an increase in suicide rates. And whereas, it is imperative that young people in the community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas, the city of Berry is a welcoming community, affirming the right of self-determination to all its residents and proud supporters of the state laws protecting the rights of LGBTQ individuals. And whereas, the city of Berry recognizes the importance of equality, equity, and freedom. And whereas, the Berry City LGBTQ community are a vital part of all fields and professions and contribute to a stronger community. And whereas, Berry City is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council does hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month in the city of Berry, and urges residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ community to actively promote the principles of equality, equity, and liberty.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve?
It's moved.
Moved by Counselor Guston, seconded by...
Certainly.
Yeah, it was almost a tie, but we'll give it to that side. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Thank you very much. Motion is approved. Item 3A is visitors and communications. Is there anyone... I'm sorry? Oh, is there anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? We've got a few hands up. Yes, ma'am. Would you... Yeah, and then state your name for the clerk, if you wouldn't mind.
I, Amy Galford, G-A-L-F-O-R-D, and I live on Foss Street in Ward 3. This is a low chair. I brought a couple notes, just so I don't ramble. If we'll talk about either flood recovery stuff or the water main break this weekend later on the agenda, I can talk about it then, or I can just say a few things now. I don't know if they're coming up later, like in the manager's report, but I'll just...
Yes to both. I suspect the water main break will be included in the manager's report.
I will.
I don't know if I should just save it till then, or be brief now, whichever you'd prefer.
Your pleasure.
Okay. I'll sail it up, like, big water infrastructure, and then kind of my neighborhood experience. I wasn't able to attend the roundtable you did last week. I did skim through the meeting minutes, and I'm glad that you had that meeting and you're still working on the planning. Skimming through that, it reminded me that, you know, we started having those meetings back in October. And they were really well-attended, that middle-of-October meeting, and there were a lot of great ideas that came out of the three groups in that. I sat in on the infrastructure one, and it was literally standing room only. You know, people talked about need for better emergency communication at that meeting, and I think we still have a need for that. And I think what happened with the water main break this weekend was an example where we've got to make some improvements on that. It's one thing to have a water main break, but what if we have another flood this summer or winter? We need to figure out that better system. And I know you're working on it. I know you're working on the alert system, but, like, high priority. You know, one comment I made at that meeting back in October was, I think we need, like, a two-month debris cleanup plan, get stuff off the riverbanks before it goes in the river. There's still stuff when I drove here along River Street. There's banks full of mud. Like, we've got to get a plan. People fight about whether or not to dredge the rivers, but I don't think anybody fights about not having stuff go in when it's on the shoreline. One of the things I did for Green Up Day was clean up with a crew of folks around the Berlin Street Bridge. There's still so much debris there. Like, we've got to come up with a plan for that. And I think I saw in some of the brainstorming about, like, raising the height of the Berlin Bridge, like, that's a massive future project, but is there anything we can do to block the debris from getting under there? Because it'll happen again. So, you know, and I kind of thought, like, okay, we need a two-month plan and, like, a six-month plan, right? And then that was pretty much what we got from the state representatives, too, when they came in, the state government folks, in terms of coming up with a plan. So I hope the pace of coming up with a plan will accelerate. And I just poked around the city website earlier today, and it seems like there's some reinventing the wheel going on, and I think there's a lot of stuff you could dust off and move on quicker. So there's a 2018 City Stormwater Master Plan. It's got 72 locations for best management practices. They prioritize the top 20. They're settled on a top five. There's design work. They've got budget estimates. You know, the story map that they've got on there has photos from... It was before I moved to Berry, but around 2017, they look exactly like the ones we had last year. So, like, yeah, we need to figure out the exact river science, and I'm a huge proponent of that. But I think, I think there's some things we already know that we need to do. There's a 2020 City Municipal Plan with a strategic plan in it, and it's got lists of items and priorities about water infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, budget estimates. Like, I think we can pick some projects from that. And then there's the 23 Capital Plans. There's both the Capital Fund and the Enterprise Fund. And if I'm reading those right, the Capital Fund projects that we're $11 million in the hole versus our need through 2030 or so, and about $17 million in the hole on the Enterprise for Water and Wastewater. So I know there's a lot of other things that city council wants to spend money on and spend our ARPA money on and that sort of thing, but... And I should say, that Capital Plan has a little asterisk, but it doesn't include the public works garage. So, like, we were in a budget hole before the flood, and it's kind of like, you know, my car's paid off, but if I don't save for repairs and my next car purchase, like, I'm going to be in trouble. Like, we're in a hole. And so, just with budget decisions... And I know housing gets a lot of the attention, but I really think there's a lot of tremendous infrastructure we need. And I've said before to council that housing and infrastructure are not two separate things. The infrastructure needs to be there to support the housing. So that brings me to the water main break this weekend. So Saturday night, I lost water at my house, completely lost water, no water pressure. Took a couple days... Took flushing on and off the next day to get all the rust and air out of my system. This morning, I left the house to go to a meeting in Montpelier, and I have a leak in my service line connection somewhere. So there's water leaking in the street, in front of my house. I happened to notice that this morning. It keeps drying up as the sun shines on it, and then it comes back again. That started with the break on Berlin Street. So the crews came out and looked at it today, and it's not severe, but it's sort of like, that's a 100-year-old main. I've got an old service line. We've got old stuff all over. And I can handle the cost if I need to replace that, but a lot of folks in the North End can't. So there's a lot of existing housing that's on a lot of old existing, old infrastructure that just needs to get fixed. And I think, I think I saw some things with the communication that were not going well this weekend. We had people saying, oh, that means everybody citywide's got to boil their water, which is not the case. We had people saying, oh, there's nothing wrong, or, oh, it's always like this, and I don't think those are true either. So I think the truth was somewhere in the middle. But it just, if, you know, I'm glad that the North End is getting more attention right now, but it's needed that for a while. And, you know, right now, we've got Berlin Street torn up. We've got a cone sitting in the middle of the Smith and Berlin Street intersection, which is fun to watch cars try to figure out how to drive around that and not get in an accident right now. But that's been out there for a few days. And I'm not faulting the city public works crews. They're doing the best they can, and they've got too much on their plate. So just, just a plug that we, we focus on the infrastructure, because I know housing is the glossy thing, but I think we've got a lot of infrastructure needs, and we've had them for a while. Thanks.
Thank you. Joella Mulvaney, how are you?
Hi, I'm fine, thanks. Joella Mulvaney from the North End. I think this is a night of history, apparently. Vermont women began a drive for voting rights in the state as early as 1870. 1880, in 1880, the Vermont legislator did grant tax-paying women the right to vote in school district meetings, and women were allowed to hold school offices or be elected or appointed as school superintendents or town clerks. In 1900, women became eligible to become notaries, public or trustees of public libraries, and in 1902, town treasurers. Women won the right to vote in Vermont in 1920, and in 1921, the first woman legislator was elected, Edna Louise Beard, who then became the first woman in Vermont Senate. As a comparison, here in Berry City, Mary S. McKay became the first woman city clerk, ex-officio, appointed after her husband died during his term in office. That was in 1922. Not until 1985 was a woman elected to be on the Berry City Council, and that was Frances Florucci. In 1989, Franny was the first woman mayoral candidate. Only three have run since, non-winning election. In 1997, Ellen Andrews is the second woman elected to the Berry City Council. And in 2018, the Berry City Council had two women elected to serve for the very first time. So this is in reference to the comments made by Counselor Guston last two meetings ago. I thought it might interest you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else send a visit? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Bern Rose. I live in Berry City. First, I'd like to thank Counselor Stockwell for last Tuesday's PowerPoint presentation highlighting what we are doing well with our infill and the zoning changes that are allowing housing to be developed and looking at possibilities. Secondly, kudos to the Spalding High School Music Department and Art Departments for their exceptional work and performances, including the performance of some very difficult work by a professor from the University of New Hampshire. Those, the kids did an amazing job, and I was very impressed because they were working with some difficult scores. Please visit the Berry Unified Union School District webpage for good information and vote on or before June 18th. Our school budget vote is up, and I encourage everyone to vote. Some people have absentee ballots. It's a short window. So if you don't think there's time to pop it in the mail, the city clerk has many options for people to bring it in or come in and vote in person. Some people I have heard are concerned about having fixed incomes, like myself, who is an elder. I'm very wealthy. I'm just being facetious. But I am able to take care of my needs. There is something called the Homestead Tax Rebate, and it allows rebates for people with incomes up to $128,000. So I encourage anyone who feels that they can't afford the school and municipal taxes to look into the Homestead Tax Rebate. Rather than attacking our education system, I hope that people will address the insurance lobby and work to bring down the cost of insurance for our teachers and paraeducators, which went up 16% this year. And on June 13th, the Berry City Elementary and Middle School are celebrating their field days, next to the last day of school, which is pretty exciting. And this year, I have enjoyed becoming more involved in our schools, even though I don't have kids or grandkids here. Brenda Waterhouse, who is the principal, is asking for volunteers. You do have to go through a volunteer clearance and check, so do that today and come on the 13th and help out with celebrating the end of a very successful school year for our kids. If anyone wants to study the achievements they've made, they can go to the May 1st Curriculum Committee meeting, where Curriculum Director Karen Fredericks made a presentation, and you can see the growth that our kids are making and support our schools. Thank you very much. I think that school is also a part of our city, and that's why I brought it to city council.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
We can. Would you state your name for the record, sir?
My name is Hanif Nazarali, and you do, it's a bit of a mouthful, but you do have me in your agenda packet. And the city manager has my contact in case there are any questions that can't be answered here. So I'm, I'm here to, well, I'm here as coordinator for Montpelier e-bike lending library. I'm a Montpelier resident, operating the lending library for a couple of years, serving more than Montpelier, five or six communities around. But I'm also a community liaison, which is why I'm here today. Community liaison for a bike share, prospective bike share, and working with the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission to make that happen. So I'm here to ask you for $3,000 towards a local match for a scoping study, scoping grant, that will create the regional community bike share program. I already have, Montpelier Alive has already committed 6,000, and I'm looking to Waterbury for a further 3,000 to make up a 12,000 local match for this application to V-Trans. So the local match of 12,000 would leverage 48,000 as an award from V-Trans and enable CV-RPC as the sponsor applicant to contract a consulting firm who will do the scoping costing of the proposed... What is proposed is a sort of a hub-and-spoke model of community bike share. I'd like to speak a little bit more about bike share, in case not everybody is aware and familiar with them. It's a unique design that we're looking at, and it's unlike the corporate turnkey model that you may be familiar with in the Burlington area, where they, which is currently operated by Bird and previously by Bolt Mobility, and before that by Gotcha, which is a hint, an indication of, like, that model is not necessarily very long, you know, doesn't have a long horizon. The contracts are very short. Additionally, they, that model of bike share, 50 cents per minute when you're hiring a bike, serves a very small segment of the population. So we actually have an exciting opportunity, because our agency for transportation has definitely been waiting for somebody to come along to, to, to ask them for support and substantial support to make a bike share operational in our very specific context. So we're looking to co-create a model that's a better fit for Central Vermont region, and we're looking at hubs in Berry, Montpelier, and Waterbury. And it's a hub-and-spoke model, so there'll be a density of bike stations in those hubs. But then spokes in the hub-and-spoke model are the communities that are served by Berry and Montpelier and so on. So that's the very essential design, but obviously the scoping study, together with community consultations, will develop that design further. So Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission was, you know, has put in an application and will continue to follow the application through to award to contract and oversee the consultants and formulate the terms of reference, which hopefully, if we have our three hubs buying into this scoping study, then hopefully we'll agree the terms of reference together so that we ensure the sort of outputs that we want come out of this scoping study. So in summary, we have a June application opportunity with an award end of August, September, that will, together with a local match, be 60,000, enabling a scoping study to go ahead, probably over the winter. I want to say that what I'm asking for from the council is the commitment, so a letter of commitment addressed to the CV-RPC. The funds themselves will only be required once the total local match is in place at CV-RPC and an award is offered from V-Trans. So this is the first step. I hope to have you on board with this quite exciting opportunity. And I'll say a couple of things about why we're going for a specific model that's a fit for us. We really would like to localize rather than go with one of the huge operators. And Bird is operating in cities in Europe, and they really pay attention to the large cities. So we're talking about having Darren at Vermont Bicycle Shop, you know, as a key, you know, member in the design group, and the same in Montpelier. And we really would hope that that, the putting this effort and taking our time in the design, having community engagement, would actually make for a more sustainable model, which... There are models that are, that provide for a much more inclusive and affordable bike share in the greater Boston area. It's a great example of a public-private partnership, where cities are involved. Big sponsors like Blue Cross Blue Shield are a title sponsor, and that makes it a very much a long-term... They've just extended their support. Blue Cross Blue Shield has extended their support for seven years. So we're talking about a very long-term, dependable form of transportation and an alternative to everybody having to drive their own vehicles. I hope I haven't overstayed in this seat.
Not at all, sir. Counsel, any questions? Question from Counselor Stockwell?
Not a question. I move that we commit, do a letter of commitment for $3,000 for this study.
And Counselor Wazak, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'll second that motion. I do think we should do a letter of commitment. But I'm curious as to whether, you know, since Montpelier Alive on their side is paying into this rather than the municipality of Montpelier, I'm wondering whether there might be a conversation with BADC slash the Berry Partnership to see if... And I'm not trying to be difficult. I know $3,000 in the schemes of things is not a lot of money when we have such a large deficit going into next year, but trying to save all the pennies we can. I, I think we should commit to doing the $3,000 either way. But perhaps in between now and when the actual local matches due, we could have a conversation with the partnership and BADC to see if they, like their sister organization in Montpelier, could help with that 3,000.
Understood. And Nicholas, as I understand, you recommend looking at the budget is simply that we do not have general fund flexibility to support the request?
Yeah, there's certainly no general fund, I think. You know, whether this would be, this would have to be, like, either ARPA or something like one of the trust funds, but general fund is, is going to be tight.
So, but wait, there's more. Yes, ma'am.
Is there money in the Semper Bond Fund that we would be able to use? Because I'm thinking specifically, he designated money for the bike path, and so this seems to go hand-in-hand with that, so I think that would be a really appropriate use of those funds.
Yeah, I spoke to Dawn, Assistant City Manager, today, knowing this was coming up about potential sources. And she said that if this was approved, that would be one of the areas we'd look to make sure that was eligible, but that's, if it wasn't ARPA, that would be another source.
Okay, great.
So, yes, sir.
I just was curious, you know, how Berry would be able to continue to have a stake in the game. I just, I'd like to see the city not get pushed out of some of the decision-making. I think that's really key. I mean, we're talking about a different model than the corporate model. So I just want to make sure that Berry is going to have a partnership from the start.
Yeah, I'd say that's music. That's exactly what we want to hear. And I'm sure that you have committees that would, would take an interest. CV-RPC has, presumably has a Berry representative on the transportation committee that will probably be circulating the terms of reference. So I'd say, you know, right from the terms of reference, let's, what are we asking consultants? We're asking them to match the community needs. But we do need people within Berry. We need, you know, Darren at the, at the bike, who knows the demand. I mean, he has people walking through the door. And a lot of other people don't walk through the door of bike shops because they can't afford the, you know, certain for e-bikes.
Right.
But we are looking at a, at a very mixed model and having a cargo bike, possibly having a smart bike that isn't necessarily electric and is easier to maintain. But those things will come out of a decent level of community engagement. I called myself the community liaison at, at the startup, you know, and I think we would really need to have, each hub would need to have a liaison person
Sure.
that would coordinate and use the strengths of the various institutions and, and local parties to get sufficient involvement. I have to say that I'm very, very much a skeptic about the value of scoping studies unless we do really have a sort of demand-driven engagement. And I will, I will be getting together a group that would then write a community component, would seek funding from different sources than the Agency of Transportation to really run parallel with a scoping study. Because, you know, we'll meet, we'll need a lot of time and effort to really, to, to really iterate with the consultants and possibly try out, trial a few things.
Sure.
And that's why I'm speaking from the e-bike lending library, because we already have had, over the last few years, a certain patronage. And it's a very diverse patronage of people who are trying out for one week, seeing how it, you know, how this alternate form of transportation fits into their, you know, their daily life. So we really need to be working with Capstone, the new initiatives that are coming around transportation. And I'm sure that Barry has its very specific, as you mentioned, the bike path and there are certain infrastructure things that the consultants will have to be, they will have the technical expertise to see where, where are you at in the planning stages and infrastructure development? Where are the rights-of-way issues that need to be solved in order to place the bike station in the places that we really, the community really wants to see them?
Sure.
So working community component and scope, you know, engineering consultants is a great opportunity. And if we get the funding from the state, I think that opens up a much larger pot of money for actual setup, purchase of bikes and the infrastructure that you need around bike stations. And I have spoken with the Agency of Transportation grant coordinators who say, we were waiting for somebody to come along. And they have looked at the federal guidance, absolutely okay, we are eligible to apply. If the scoping study results indicate these are the options and we choose to go with a particular model, the state should be, should have federal funds that will back us up.
This is really exciting.
Thank you, thank you for, really, that's exactly what we need to do. We need to start bottom up.
Got my support. So first of all, it's nice to meet you, Mr. Nazarali. Appreciate you coming in. You know, as the manager said, certainly, and as you heard even in earlier visitors and communications, the general fund, which, part of which the Semper Bond Fund is allocated to, is, you know, certainly challenged, and the manager could not support general fund appropriation. So I did know that you had actually gone to Montpelier Alive, that they had committed to the $6,000, to your $6,000 match. When exactly does your grant have to be in? End of June?
Well, there's, there's bicycle and pedestrian program applications are June 14th. The letters of commitment ideally should be there.
Coming right up.
For that, yeah.
So, so I reached out, you know, noting that, so in Barry, what Montpelier Alive is to Montpelier, the Barry Partnership is to Barry. So I reached out to Tracy Lewis and asked her if she'd be willing to help, knowing that we simply don't have the capacity in our general fund. So good news is, followed up with Tracy, when I saw this in my packet, I reached out to Tracy, followed up with her just before the meeting started. She's already raised $1,000, and she's willing to do a GoFundMe page to see if they can't raise an additional 2,000 to meet your three through the Barry Partnership. And my prediction is good things are gonna happen because it's just the kind of community that Barry is, you know, people step up and give to worthy causes. And yours is. I mean, you're doing a lot of work and you're doing it yourself and not getting paid, sorry. But, but, so counsel, I'm not sure where this leaves us. I mean, I'm certainly on board with supporting this program in one way or another, but I don't know that the motion is necessary at this point. I think what we should do is give Tracy a week or so to recognizing that the 14th is next Thursday?
Friday.
Is it Friday?
Next Friday.
Next Friday. Hey, so we got 10 days. So recognizing that we could, you know, we'll stay in close contact with you. But what I'd like to do is give Tracy the opportunity to see what she can do. And then, and then perhaps if the council, we've got a council meeting next Tuesday as well, so we can monitor her progress and see how well she does. Would that, would that work for you, sir?
Yes, I mean, I'll just note, remind you that it's a letter of commitment, but not actually, the funds do not have to be mobilized at that point.
Yeah, understand.
As long as you feel confident that you can meet a commitment by the time of the award and contracting process. That, that suits, suits us fine.
So do I have your, do I have your contact information? Do I have your email? What I'd like to do is put you in touch with Tracy and Nicholas. Yeah, Nicholas, if you'd forward that to me, I can put you in touch with Tracy. I'll, I'll do it tonight as soon as, soon as we adjourn here. And, and like I said, I predict good things are gonna happen. I like your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Just a, a brief question from Mr. Nazarali. Does the letter of commitment need to come from a municipality? Or can it come from any organization that is able to commit to matching the funds? In other words, does the city council need to make a letter of commitment on behalf of the city of Barry to participate in the program? Or should that wait for the Barry Partnership?
Christian, would you like to?
I would hazard a guess, yes. No, it does not need to come from the municipality itself.
Okay, by the 14th. Yes, ma'am.
So I have two questions. One, I, our next council meeting is two weeks from today, so I'm a little confused about...
I'm calling a special council meeting for next Tuesday.
Okay. And my other question is, is there's a motion on the table, so...
The what?
There's a motion on the table and a second.
Yeah, that, I, yeah, I'm getting, I'll get to that.
Okay.
So the, so counsel, Counselor Stockwell? Would you like to withdraw your motion until next Tuesday, until we see exactly whether... You know, in other words, a letter of support may not be required from the city given the partnership's effort to fundraise. The letter of support could come from the partnership. And we're gonna be meeting again before the 14th, so, Mr. Nazarali, we won't let you down. One way or another.
I feel like we could do a letter of commitment, and it may be stronger coming from the municipality. So I think that would be beneficial. The other thing I think is that between Semper Bond and ARPA, we could, we could do the 3,000. I know we can't do it from the general fund, but it does seem like we have some other options here.
So you prefer not to allow, not to have the partnership fundraise?
No, they can go ahead and fundraise. We're, we're doing a letter of commitment. Where the money comes from is where the money comes from. But I just feel like we couldn't do that. It's $3,000. We could, we could use that from ARPA, and I think we'd hardly notice. And if the partnership can raise that money, or I'm, you saying they're already raised money? So it seems like we could make the letter of commitment and move forward with this.
So are you amending your motion? Are you withdrawing your motion? I'm just trying to figure out, there is a motion.
No, actually, I thought we should vote on the motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
I thought we should vote on the motion.
The, your motion was for $3,000?
Was to write a letter of commitment for the $3,000, yes.
From the city?
From some city funds, either Semper Bond or ARPA funds. Unless Nicholas thinks that's not possible.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Point of order of a discussion before we do the vote. The motion, as I understand and seconded it, was just to do the letter of, of commitment for the city. That's the only step we're taking. Where the money actually comes from, I would, as I said in my remarks, I'd prefer it to come from the partnership or community sources. So the letter of commitment, at least as I understand it, just says that the money will be there, which leaves us plenty of room to work with the partnership in their fundraising to get that $3,000. But if the partnership raises $2,200, then we can figure out through Semper Bond or ARPA where to get that remaining $8,000. So the motion that I seconded was just for the letter of commitment, not identifying the actual funding source. And I agree wholeheartedly with working with the partnership and the community to try and raise that money that does not involve any municipal funding.
Understood. Any other discussion?
Just saying that's my understanding of the motion as well.
I'm sorry?
Just saying that that is my understanding of the motion as well. It's a letter of commitment to the program leaving the source of funding as yet to be named.
Got it. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? Thank you very much, sir. Pleasure meeting you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else under visitors and communications? Okay, Once Twice Gone. Item, counsel, that brings us to item four on the agenda, consent agenda, which is the, is the approval of the minutes. That is the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, May 28, 2024. City warrants, approval of the city warrants from the week of June 5th, 2024. Madam Clerk, do we have any office licenses, any licenses and permits?
Yes, we do.
And they are?
All right, we have Two Kittering. We have Sweet and Salty. This is for the Pride celebration this weekend. And Marah Sa Spice. They both have been approved by the Health Officer, Nick Copping. So he's just waiting for council approval. We also have the Corey Kitchen First Class Liquor License and Outside Consumption Permit. Rossini is a Second Class Liquor License, all payment. Jerry Sports and Tavern First Class Liquor License. Spencer's Discount Tobacco, Second Class Liquor License, and also Tobacco and Tobacco Substitute. Beverage Baron Tobacco and Tobacco Substitute. And JD Corp., which is Gusto's First Class Liquor License and Outside Consumption Permits. All have been approved by Chief Vale.
Okay, thank you very much. We also have an authorization for the manager to execute contracts. Contracts, just FYI, Nicholas, going forward, contracts should be listed on the agenda and put them on next week for ratification. Those contracts are a $216,500 contract with Wright Pierce, a $151,600 contract with Wright Pierce, and a $48,330 contract with the Dufrane Group. And the source of those funds, all of them, is long-term, low-interest loan from the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund. And in addition, we need to authorize the city to deduct a new childcare employee tax deduction from our employees. Is there a motion, motion, excuse me, and we added the FY25 fee schedule? Is there a motion to approve?
No motion added.
Is there a second?
No motion.
No?
Correction, under new business discussion, it says flood litigation, and it should be flood mitigation.
Thank you very much.
And then I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded by counsel.
My internet is being spotty. Is this the minute?
Yes.
Okay, quick thing on page, page five of our packet, the bottom of the first page of minutes. My name is... There is a, where there should be a Z at the end there. W-A-S-Z-A-Z-A-K instead of S-A-K. Not to be...
Got it. And you said, Counselor Spalding, you said you had questions on the fee schedule?
I do.
Go for it.
Give me a second to get there because it's at the end of the packet. Okay. Question about our proposed fees for intermittent for all infants has been reduced to zero.
Yes.
And I have a question about that. I also have a question about the stormwater connections and why there's nothing there. And now there is a $100 connection and what that means. And if you could just explain a little bit more about that, that would be helpful.
Sure. So the first one, Counselor Spalding, on the infants. So we, we focused heavily on the cemetery fees this year. They haven't been changed in a long time. And a lot of those fees, we operate at a loss. So many of them are to basically help us recapture sort of the overtime costs that come with a lot of them. But the infant ones, you know, this was just sort of like a heartstring puller. Like if you're bearing an infant, you probably shouldn't pay. So you've gone through enough. So that was really just a, sort of like a, you know, should we be charging people who are going through a really terrible moment? And then the, the stormwater connection fee, so this is a new proposal. This is, for many years, the city did stormwater connections, didn't charge for them. This would be any sort of application that would come through the Department of Public Works. If the Director of Public Works approves the connection, there would just be an associated fee. This is something the, the city has done for free. There's impacts to making stormwater connections, so this is a, sort of a small recruitment of that.
So I guess my follow-up question is, if we are charging someone for it, then do we become more responsible for it? In the sense of we're not charging for it ahead of time and we're not really, do you know what I mean? Do we take more liability, have more exposure?
I, I think what it gives us is more visibility into what people are doing. So I think it's more, sort of, you know, same way we charge for permits in Janet's office, right? It gives us more information about what people are doing with their, with their construction. So from our perspective, it's more of, it's more information gathering. And it allows us to, the Public Works Director, to make sure that that connection is done appropriately.
And is $100, is that for a single unit, like a single home, single-family home versus a development versus a, you know, 30-unit apartment building? Like, is it the same? What, what?
It's, it's per connection for, for structures, I understand it from the Public Works Director, but I can get that clarified.
Because I'm a little concerned that that just seems like it's very general and basic, and it seems like it should be fleshed out a little bit more.
We can, we, the, the good news about this one is that it's a new fee, so we can, we can... A lot of these are time-dependent on the new fiscal year. But if that's, that's when we can sort of add tiers to, that's, that's something we can do because it's, it's new. So we could, we could do that mid-year if we need to.
Okay.
I'll say.
For now?
Would you like to, just for clarity, should, would you like to keep that one? Or should we flesh it out further or start with that? I just want to know for when we publish in the paper.
That one? Well, I understand it perfectly well. It's a per connection fee, depending on the structure. So the scenarios that you were describing, obviously a larger scenario with a more extensive stormwater system would require multiple connections. You know, generally, the connections aren't, I mean, they can be anywhere from three and a half inches to, in terms of the pipe, to 12 inches. It just depends on how you're connecting it, but it's all engineered. And I understand the fee from Brian, it's a per...
Yeah, that's a per structure.
It's just a per connection basis. There could be additional fees because you're working within the city right away. So if you're connecting into the city storm system, obviously it would be engineered and there could be additional fees. So I'm, I'm comfortable getting it on the books. As Nicholas said, if we want to amend it later on, as we look into it more, and it may very well be a part of our flood mitigation strategy, you know, we could certainly revisit that.
I think I'd like to make amendment that we just tabled that particular fee and get more information on it because I'd like to understand it more than, I mean, it's a brand-new thing in stormwater connections, especially when you think about flood mitigation. I think that we need to have a better understanding about this and talk to some river scientists. And I'd rather do that than push it forward and then have to make amendments later.
So it's a fee schedule, so we'll strike the fee from the schedule and pass the schedule?
Yes, I would, that's my amendment, yes.
So Counselor Spalding's amendment would be, amendment to the motion would be approval of the consent agenda, but striking the city stormwater connection fee from the fee schedule. Is there a second to that amendment? Amendment is seconded. Eddie, did you have a question?
Yes, not on this part of the fee schedule, going to the overnight and day-use parking permits. I think that, you know, the 2.5% increase, I can let it go this year. But we are now creeping up into, in my view, expensive, overly expensive territory for these parking... for these parking permits. A day use one for the year is like 250 bucks. The one for overnight parking, over a hundred dollars. Folks who, you know, I, in my neighborhood in Jefferson Street, over to Courier Park, April Street, Church Street, the Heading Church offers overnight parking permits for their lot during the winter for five bucks. But not every neighborhood is as fortunate to have a space like Heading where they might be able to save some money there. And for folks who may be living paycheck to paycheck, which we know is statistically more likely to be folks who are renting apartments, when we're getting over a hundred bucks, that's a good chunk of change that folks might not have right now, especially with inflation the way it is. So I'm fine with letting this year go, but as part of the fee schedule, it says that the rates will go up by 2.5% unless amended by council. So I think moving forward, we should pump the brakes on the 2.5%.
Uh, are you offering that as an amendment?
No. I know, I, I think that like this, this year is fine. It's already been budgeted for. This is what Nicholas ran all the numbers on, so I don't want to mess with it this year, but moving.
More notation for future discussion?
Yeah.
Noted. And Councilor Stock, oh, your hand's back down. Okay. So folks, there is an amendment. Yes?
So, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but the stormwater connections would essentially be the same thing as a water connection or the sewer connection. So that fee is definitely not consistent because those are, they're $2,000 a connection and the stormwater is only 100. I just wanted to make that note.
Okay. So we will vote the amendment first. The amendment is to strike, is to strike the stormwater connection fee from the current fee schedule. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. The amendment carries and the original, um, the original motion was to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much. That carries. Hugh, Ms. City Clerk, how are you? Time for your report. Oh, yeah. I ain't lying. There you are.
I just did my whole spiel on the liquor licenses. Other than that, we've mailed out absentee ballots this, last week, late last week, to over 600 community members. We're slowly starting to receive responses. And we will be mailing more out gradually as we start receiving more requests. Other than that, we're just kind of settling into the new routine, new people.
How's it going?
Going good.
Good. I'm glad. Any questions for the city clerk and treasurer? Okay. Anything under liquor control or cannabis?
No.
No?
The liquor license I brought off.
Got it. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of updates for the council. We are actively, persistently looking for lifeguards. As I mentioned, last, several of our outstanding lifeguards from last year won't be back due to graduations. It's a great way to spend the summer, to, you know, be hanging out at the pool. We've increased the pay for the lifeguards to $17 per hour, hoping to entice some people to show up. Have to be 15 years old and we're looking to get a class for people who are interested in getting certified. So again, if you're interested, please contact me directly, citymanager@berrycity.org, and we'll make sure to get you through the process. But again, great, great summer job and, and now pays even a little bit better than last time we, we advertised for it. We have ordered the portable toilets that were funded in the FY25 budget for use by individuals experiencing homelessness. Tess has been working with community partners and they will be initially placed at the People's Health and Wellness and over at Enterprise Alley near the vapor extraction shed. So we're trying to get some variable locations that are somewhat centrally located, but also far enough apart to serve various members of the population. Those will be coming in July as they're funded in the FY25 budget. We have a lot of, you've seen a lot of DPW crews out there. Construction season is underway for them. So just want to remind residents to please be respectful of the, um, the alerts, the roadwork alerts that we send out. Be very careful, drive safely through the work zones so our workers can, can come, can get home safely. Just this past week, they've been working on guardrail projects. They've done water line replacements and they are starting to prep for pavement on Farwell Street, which will, uh, great news. And then we are working on HMGP applications. The state pushed out the deadline for applications, pre-applications till August, which is great. We've been working on several projects that are related to mitigation, including hydrology study for culvert upsizing to make sure culverts are the right dimensions and getting water in and out. And we're also looking at bridge elevations. Those are two key parts of our strategy, along with things that are already underway, such as the FEMA buyouts to restore flood planes. So HMGP, those are our priorities right now for applications, working with Brian on getting those prepared. And then the odd project, just want to share a really positive update. A couple of weeks ago, I updated the council that rural development had notified us that we didn't need to identify the full match. We just needed to put a small match into, to get, to draw down the funding. They contacted me last week and said, with even better news, said we don't have to put any match at all. So we are working on, the application is nearly complete. I know I've talked to Charlie and Sue about a letter we need from the Buildings and Facilities Committee. And after that, we will be submitting our application. The application, just for the council's awareness, takes the full scope of the project. So the full project was over $6 million. We've, the application includes the full 6 million, knowing that we only get 3.5 million from the grant. But that allows us to then prioritize within that 3.5 million. I know when council last discussed this, it was, you know, focusing on the HVAC, focusing on the electrical and trying to get at the ADA issues as well. So within that 3.5 million, we'll be looking at a scope that, that gets us going. But that, I think, was fantastic news to allow us to get rolling on that project. And then finally, as referenced earlier, but we did suffer water main break on Berlin Street. It happened late Saturday night. Crews worked overnight till about 6:00 AM to repair the issue. We know several homes experienced loss of water pressure and, and then there was some discolored water, which happens frequently when these events happen, they disturb the, the water in, in the pipes. The most important thing, there was no contamination at any point. So we didn't have any boil water advisory required, which was great news. I know that can be a huge inconvenience for people and certainly a safety hazard with it happening overnight and, and people not getting updates, no matter how that had happened. The, I'm glad Amy brought up the alert system. In fact, this is, just today, we started meeting with Regroup, which is the, we've, as you may recall, in the FY25 budget, we added money to create a very specific messaging text system through Regroup. We rolled that out for budget purposes. It rolls out in July so that we can have it tied to a fiscal year. Obviously, hopefully in the future, these alerts will get better. We're very excited and I think this event highlighted the need to have something like that. So we're getting there. It'll take some time. We'll need some, we'll, we'll, we'll be rolling out a system to get residents signed up for this. But I think this event certainly highlighted the need for that, that program and, and we're excited to get it rolled out to, to residents. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Just curious what the plan was with the sidewalk on Allen Street that was proposed for last year?
Yeah. I think, so we, I've talked to Brian about it. I think there was some, there wasn't, I'd say, community consensus on it. Last year, what happened was we ended up having to prioritize a lot of that for, for paving. I don't believe it's on their schedule for this year either. But if, we're happy to talk about it if, if that's a continuing need up there.
Is there any way that we can at least get a crosswalk painted on Allen and.
Absolutely.
I know we had talked about it last year and it wasn't able to come to fruition.
At Prospect and Allen, you said?
Yeah. We've got a lot of kids crossing that street.
Yeah, I think.
I've almost been hit by a car walking that and.
We have the paint, paint crew out almost every day, so we'll, we'll make sure they get there.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Stockwell?
This is a strong suggestion, but I think would make everyone's life easier. If Public Works had a Facebook page, they could easily post like what's happening where.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Stockwell. I, you know, I've grappled with this question because I'm not a Facebook user myself. I think I, I would welcome people's input on it. I, I wonder if having, my question with the staff has been, we've talked about this at department head meetings actually, is we, Berry City Police Department has a Facebook page, Berry City Fire Department has a Facebook page, the Rec Department had a Facebook page. I, my question about that is, is it better to consolidate so people have one place to go look as opposed to several, right? And, and I genuinely would welcome feedback on that. As from my perspective, it's generally easier for me to, to go to one place to see it. But I, I, like I said, I'm, I'm open-ended on this. I've, I've wondered if the opposite is, might be better to have one place for people to go look and we fold the police department's page and the fire department's page and rec department's page all into the city website. So you'd be getting content from every department and you wouldn't, you wouldn't be missing something because it's only posted on one side or the other. So we've had this discussion, you know, Janet's here, she's, you know, nodding and smiling. We've, we've talked about this a couple of times. We genuinely don't know if one approach is better than the other. I'm happy to talk to some of my colleagues in government or, or get feedback from, from council or the community about what would be better ways to reach people. I think Regroup will help a lot, by the way. The, once we have the Regroup application, you know, just about everyone has a smartphone and this will be a notification just like you get for a text message. So I think that will go a long way to, to helping us reach people quickly.
I think you could collapse the police and the fire department into one Facebook page. It's just that making it easy, you could do two ways for people to find the information. The more ways people can easily find the information, the more likely they are to feel like, oh, it's easy to know what's happening in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just say to that, my preference would be just on the city's website. The problem with Facebook is they've got an algorithm, so you don't know that people are even going to see, you know, when, when something's posted there. And, and so no matter how you try to strategize dividing that up, like you're fighting an algorithm of a whole bunch of advertisements, right? So versus, I think, just putting on the city website. Because if I've got a question about something from a government agency, like I'm going to trust their website over the, the Facebook and that's one place you've got to update it. One thing I forgot to ask about earlier is what's happening with the trestle situation? Because there was the public meeting about that.
We talked about that last week.
Okay.
And we'll be talking about that more over the coming weeks.
Okay. Because I just wanted to say, like, I went to that meeting, I know Councilor Deering did, Steve McKenzie did, Peter Anthony did a ton of work for that. It was like universally like, this is crazy. Like, that was the public feedback on it. And then, so, you know, I didn't bother like putting in written comments for that because I know Steve McKenzie had drafted things and the city put that in. And, and then it, like, was a surprise. If there's another round of like public comments, I'd be happy to write a letter about that.
The update is it's still crazy.
Okay.
It's absolutely crazy. It boggles the imagination. It defies laws of good public stewardship. And, yeah. And I'm a little, and I'm a little worked up about it, so I'd rather not talk about it right now.
Bring that up. I just wondered if there's a timeline like for another chance for public comment or something? Just because I, like, I thought it seemed unnecessary before, but I can write a letter to the extent it helps.
Yeah. We'll, we will be talking more about it, but that horse might be out of the barn. Yes, ma'am?
Bern Rose, thank you, Councilor Deering, for bringing up the crosswalk. So the reason the crosswalk hasn't been done before, Nicholas, is that we were told that we don't have a crosswalk, we don't have a sidewalk on Allen Street. And the regulations prevent a crosswalk being made from a sidewalk to a non-sidewalk, even though people are crossing the street there all the time. And one summer, the, the city did pave that. But there are always close calls there because people, it's just not clear for cars to stop. And so it might take a little bit of engineering. And one of the things Bill had talked about was to just turn the corner a little bit and paint the corner a little different, make a bump out like on Perry Street so that it helps to keep people from using the whole wide space. So the crossing distance is shorter and allows for safety for the pedestrians that don't have any other space.
Bump out was the first thing that came to my mind.
Yeah, the bump out really helps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Spalding?
I have two things. One, I'm glad to hear that the crosswalks are being painted or the lines going to be painted.
So that people know which lane they're in.
Yeah. So the, the lines are painted by the state. And because most of these are state roads, where, where we have lines, most of the residential roads that are, uh, responsibility of the city, they, they generally don't have lines. But Main Street, Berlin Street, those, Washington, those are all state roads that the state's responsible for painting, so.
Hill Street coming down onto Washington Street?
Yeah, that one too.
And Hill Street coming down onto South Main?
Also. All of them, yeah.
Also the two I drive every day?
Yeah, yeah. And it's, I, I'm, I'm there as well. It's my neighborhood too and I, it's, I got it. But those are all painted by the state.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're at the mercy of their schedule?
Correct.
Okay.
No, it's an annual rite of passage where you reach out consistently to the state and lobby to see if your city or town can get jumped ahead. So those calls are happening as we speak and. Russ Fingers?
My other thing is, I think this is a good, to the point that we need better communication about things like water main breaks, we need a better website because the school district website, now we're able to have a pop-up that says, hey, there's this thing that's happening. Lake School is closed for the day because of a snow day. So if we had the ability to do that, that would be great.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've also talked about the website. I think the, the website is also a chicken and egg situation, right? It gets very little traffic. And I'm not sure, and, and it's right, does it get very little traffic because it's poor quality? Or does it get very little traffic because people don't go to websites? You know, so we've, we've looked at, we've actually had vendors in to do demonstrations to, to improve it. I'll, I'll be, I'll be frank, I, I don't like the website. I don't like the platform. It's really difficult to edit. It's really clunky, like I, I could go on. I don't like the website. They're very expensive though. And, and we're getting our, we're getting what we pay for. I'll just be honest. So certainly there's lots of products that are much better than what we have. It's, it's just about making the investment and then having the faith that people aren't coming to the website because it's bad, not because people just don't go to municipal websites. So I, I totally agree with you. I, I, I wouldn't, I'm not defending our website, it's just really clunky, but it's also cheap.
Yep. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Counsel, we'll move on to item 8A, which is our volunteer appointments. Interestingly, we have, I believe, only one new applicant. And we have one, two, five, eight, 10 reappointments. So we can be really efficient. We can interview the new applicant first. And then if council is so inclined, everyone always has an opportunity to speak. Council certainly has the opportunity to ask questions of the reappointed, reappointments and vice versa. So would you like to start, counsel, with Yana Walder, who is applying to the Cemetery Committee? Yana is our, is our only new applicant. And we, so typically, it is a requirement for folks who are a new applicant to just come in and tell the council a little about themselves, why they're interested in serving and giving, give the council an opportunity to ask questions. So Walder, are you, huh, there you are.
I'm right here.
How are you?
Good. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Why don't we just start, why don't you just tell us a little, little bit about yourself? Thank you for your application and for your willingness to serve. Why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested?
My name is Yana Walder. I moved to Berry in December from Montpelier. I am a commercial real estate broker and a commercial property manager by profession. About eight years, I work for Lake Point Property Management based out of Burlington. And I have been on a historic preservation commission in Montpelier for about three years. And yeah, just want to add something to the community by serving on the cemeteries commission. And I live, I share a property boundary with Elmwood Cemetery, so.
Fantastic. Well, thank you again for applying and welcome to Berry.
Thanks.
So I'll, I'll start with my typical softball question that I ask all of the applicants who apply to committees. And that is, you know, you're familiar with the committee, you understand how often they meet, and, and you're, you're willing and able to make the time commitment to serve effectively.
Correct.
Thank you so much. Counsel, anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I would ask what drew you to the Cemeteries Committee specifically?
The well-being of the spirits. I really do care about these public spaces a lot. And specifically Elmwood Cemetery is used by the community a lot, a lot. And I hope to add to the upkeep and the maintenance and the well-being of those spaces, as well as maybe bring some, well, I want to learn sort of what, from the folks who have done this for many years. I do think we need some young people, the next gen, to take on some of the historic knowledge and information that's kind of, has to keep being passed down. So, yeah.
Anyone else? Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve.
It's moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Got that. Okay, awesome. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Welcome aboard. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome to watch the rest of the meeting, but if you sign off, I won't hold it against you.
That's good, thanks.
Counsel, so how would you like to proceed? We could do this by committee. We could nominate all 10 for reappointment. It's your call. Make a motion to appoint all 10 incumbents.
Mr. Mayor, may I just make a comment? So Ellen Kay confirmed after the agenda went out that she was able to attend. So I would just ask that counsel consider, she would be an incumbent on the Justice Equity Diversity Inclusion and Belonging Committee. So that would be one less interview for next week, or for two weeks from now.
Okay, so no, no objections. So there would actually be 11 councils. Doesn't mind? I'm just going to read them into the record? Yeah.
Can I second it before you read them in, or?
It was already seconded, I think.
I think it was already...
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't me.
It wasn't me.
It was moved and seconded.
It was you.
Yeah.
I didn't hear you, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't think I...
You hear better when you're sitting in the center. I like this chair.
Cheryl, who do you have a seconding? Just to be clear, because Mel says she didn't second it.
Yes.
Didn't hear anybody second it.
I, I thought I heard somebody at the other end.
Oh, you went like this.
I heard it for Yana, but that's, okay, not the...
I'll second it, just for comic relief.
Got it. Okay. So it is moved and seconded. I'll just read these into the record. For Buildings and Facilities, we have Charlie Atwood and Art Desaro, who are incumbents. Justice Equity Diversity Inclusion and Belonging Committee, Emily Wheeler, who is an incumbent, Greg Kotell, William Toburg and Ellen Kay. The Cow Pasture Stewardship Committee, Chris Rousseau-Frazier, who is the incumbent and current Chair of the Committee, Mark Martin, who is an incumbent, Jim Deschler, who is an incumbent. And on Cemeteries, Giuliano Cecconelli, who is an incumbent and current Chair of the Committee, and Helen Long, who is an incumbent. Is there any discussion, or would any of the reappointees like to comment or like to address the council? No? Oh, yes, sir. Giuliano, how are you?
Good, yourself?
Good, good.
Good evening, everyone. I'm actually here not to speak on my behalf, but the BGA liaison position. That was not mentioned in the list, and there was an applicant for that. I'm just speaking for the position, and I would like the council to consider just the position itself. The BGA sends a representative, and that representative might change. So I know it's listed in the, our bylaws, I guess you could call them, as a committee position. I would just like the council to consider that that position itself, not the person.
Let, tell you what, let's dispense with this first, and then if counsel would be inclined to support that request, we can do that as well.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Sort of logistics questions for the city manager. On three out of four of our committees, there's a note saying that one applicant will be appointed to a three-year term. Have those people already identified themselves as such, or will we have to make...
No, I was going to ask the council to select who would be the three-year term. This was to stagger the terms. So for, Councilor Guston's correct, so if one of the members of the Justice Equity Diversity Inclusion and Belonging Committee needs to go to a three-year term, all others would be two-year terms, same for the cow pasture and same for cemeteries. So I don't know if there's a volunteer, it's up to council, you could take a volunteer. But we would need that clarity for, for our purposes.
So of these four, you need one willing to serve for a three-year term?
Correct.
Who is willing to serve? Well, if we go, if we go alphabetically, it would be Ellen Kay. Ellen, would you mind?
I have a question about that, actually. I thought that, like, half our committee were on opposite times. So why would we need, we do stagger, I believe. We're not, we're not all being renewed at the same time. So I didn't understand that we would need a three-year.
No, they're not, they're not properly staggered, Ellen. There's, I forgot the exact breakdown. I think it was two and five or something like that.
I think it's two and five or something.
Yeah, so this would make it four and three.
Yeah, but that's, it's fine. Yeah. And I still have my hand up to speak, to say something.
Okay, so we'll have, so Ellen Kay, sure, an amendment to that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
So we'll vote the amendment first. The amendment first would be to appoint Ellen Kay to a three-year term. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, motion carries. And brings us to the original motion, which was these. Actually, because Ellen has just been appointed to the three-year term, it would go back to the original 10 that you had on your list.
We've got two more committees for which we need three-year terms. We've got two more committees that need three-year terms as well. And I have a question about the Cemeteries Committee as well.
Okay, so...
So we need one for cow pasture and one for cemeteries.
Okay, in keeping with the tradition, Mr. Deschler, you come first in the alphabet. Any objection to a three-year term?
He's on the...
No, I'll be fine.
Okay. Anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
And seconded?
Second.
Take your pick, madam clerk. All those in favor of the amendment as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the last one we need is the cemetery?
Yep, which would be Giuliano.
And congratulations, Giuliano.
Thank you.
On having your name begin with a C. You are the first in the alphabet. Does someone care to make that motion?
So moved. Second.
Second.
And seconded, take your pick. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, which brings us back to eight.
It does.
Any other, any discussion on the reappointments? Yes?
Just a follow-up question. The manager had indicated under the Cemeteries Committee that one candidate has refused to participate in the interview process. I wonder if you could share one?
I think it's related to what Giuliano's going to mention, which is Mark Girardi has been the BGA liaison, and he just didn't want to come to the interviews.
I understand, thank you.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other discussion on the eight? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please, what's that?
There's a hand up.
Oh, sorry. Is your hand up, Ellen?
I was going to wait until after the vote, I thought. I could make a comment that does not...
Oh, I, I got you. What's that? Oh, yes, ma'am, sorry.
Just for the record, my name is Emily Wheeler Reynolds.
Oh, I apologize. It was Emily Wheeler on my agenda.
It's my mistake, Emily. Sorry, it's my fault.
No, it's not anybody's fault. It's just a mistake. Nobody's going to jail. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Ellen, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, I did. As a member of the Justice Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee, I just wanted to point something out and hope that it will be improved in further meetings of this council. We made this great resolution at the beginning of the meeting about Pride Month, about LGBTQ folks, inclusion, all the things that my committee is working for. I would request that in city council meetings, when people are recognized by the Chair, the Chair makes an attempt to be non-binary and not assume gender when calling on people. So that means ma'am, sir, miss, all of that stuff. We don't know how people identify, and we want to be as inclusive as possible. And I know these are hard habits to break, but I think it's a good challenge for really showing that our community and our city council strives to be inclusive. Thank you.
Well, I'll do my best, Ellen, but I'm not making any promises. So, yes, ma'am?
I just want to say thank you to everyone who's applied. It's wonderful to have all of these people willing to step up and serve on committees, and I appreciate Ellen's point.
Ditto. And so you would like the city, what you'd like the city to do is just recognize that the BGA sends a liaison to the Cemeteries Committee, but that's not necessarily a named position. So it's not necessarily a city appointment, just recognizing that the city authorizes the BGA to...
Send a representative.
To send a representative.
Yes.
Any objection from counsel? Someone want to put that in the form of a motion?
So moved.
And seconded?
Seconded.
I guess you'll have to come up with it on your own, sorry. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we are at item 8B on the agenda. This is Discussion of Addiction Prevention Strategies. How are you?
Thanks so much for having me tonight. My name is Sultana Khan. I'm the Director of Social Change at Mosaic Vermont, which is the new home of Central Vermont Directions Coalition. I'm here to just give you a brief overview of some of the prevention work that's happening in Washington County right now, and how you all might be a little bit more involved in it, particularly when it comes to funding streams and thinking about what it means to build a community that we would all like to live in, which is really the definition of prevention. So if you're wondering why Mosaic, we're a sexual violence prevention and response agency. We're based in Berry. We were flooded this year, or last year, and we're now up on Washington Street. We're really happy to be able to continue working out of Berry. And what we know is that violence and addiction are interrelated. So we're trying to provide a more holistic prevention framework for Washington County. I want to talk to you a little bit about what prevention currently looks like in Washington County and what some of the possibilities are in the future, and how you might be involved in that. So one thing that's happening right now, myself and my co-coordinator, Eva Zarrett, who is the Head of the Central Vermont Prevention Coalition, which meets monthly at CVMC. It is an incredible member organization filled with folks from the recovery community, the Turning Point Center is there, so many representatives of different agencies that serve people who might be touched by addiction, which we all are at this point in time. But Eva and I, for the last year, have been working on a grant that is funded by the Department of Health, the Division of Substance Use, which is restructuring how prevention work is done in Vermont. What that means for Washington County is that we have been put together with Chittenden County, Grand Isle, and Franklin County in one region, which means that we really need to be proactive about advocating for prevention money to come to our area with our priorities. Now, I just want to give you some examples of how this money is already being used. This new grant is being funded by cannabis tax. And right now, there has been funding from the general fund for this year to get this started. In the future, I think it is a 3% tax that will go towards prevention. It could be more than that. I just want to name that right off the bat. But this last round of funding, we were very involved and very proactive about being part of the process, which means that we were able to advocate for more than $100,000 in prevention funding to come to Washington County. And you should all have a list of the organizations that were funded. I have a few handouts for you. I shared them with the city manager. And I just would love to, for you to know a little bit about how these priorities were created and how this funding works. Because we'll have the opportunity in upcoming years to decide what is important to us and to ask for that money again. So there were six organizations that were funded in this last round of funding. The funding committee was comprised of different members from the public health community, as well as people with lived experience from Berry. Good Samaritan Haven was awarded $18,900 to support a prevention program for homeless individuals operating in Washington County. The People's Health and Wellness Clinic was awarded $15,600 for free healthcare for uninsured people who identify as LGBTQ plus or Two-Spirit. Sage Mountain Botanical Sanctuary has a new after-school program. It serves youth in grades four through eight. It will serve Berry, Berrytown, and Berlin. They were awarded $31,000. The Turning Point of Central Vermont, which was flooded badly and is now moving to a new location, and they are a wonderful organization. They deserve a lot of support in our area. They were awarded $14,800 for peer recovery coaching. Twinfield Together Mentoring was awarded $13,000. And Youth First Mentoring had a party a couple of weeks ago, celebrating their move into Berry. They were awarded $10,400 to begin offering mentoring services in Berry. So I think often when people hear about prevention, they think about DARE. What we know about DARE is that not only did it not work, but it actually encouraged drug use. So prevention looks really different today than it might have when I was in school and when all of you were in school. It's less about fear tactics and more about creating opportunities for connection and relationships, and that is the work that we do. We provide opportunities for young people to meet with adults. We provide adults to meet with each other, and to really address the compounding crises of social isolation and disconnectedness that we have from one another. And what we know, especially for young people, and I'm so glad to hear that this committee includes belonging in this, is that young people who feel connected in their community are 66% less likely to engage in risky behaviors. There are not many interventions that we have that have that kind of impact. So as we're thinking about prevention, funding that supports community building, that creates free public spaces for young people, particularly to gather, as you're thinking about the needs of Washington County, the Basement Teen Center in Montpelier was also flooded. They are now rotating. They don't have a permanent space. So there are very few places for young people to go. And when young people are bored, they get into trouble. So prevention work could look like many things in the upcoming years. One of the roles that you all could have is that there is also a policy part of this process. The town planning process could involve lots of opportunities for prevention work, thinking and talking about how advertisements for alcohol and cannabis are regulated, where you might want to ensure that new locations for tobacco and alcohol sales are kept away from young people, you know, around school districts, et cetera, things like that. So there are just so many opportunities for you all to be involved in what prevention looks like in Washington County. And you have this sheet also, but I wanted to just tell you a couple of the priorities that were determined by a summit that I facilitated last fall for public health professionals and decision-makers from Washington County. And the question that I asked them, when they was, when they were gathering together, this was all supported by data, was how do we build the community we want to live in? That's the framework that I used to ask them to figure out what was important to them. And I want to tell you a little just about what they answered. So their priorities for prevention funding are centered around building an engaged community with intentional, sustainable programming related to well-being, resilience, and social connection for all ages, with a special focus on intergenerational programming. How are we ensuring that adults and young people are speaking with one another, that they are sharing their stories, that they are sharing their experiences, and that we are hearing what is happening with younger generations, so that we're not making assumptions about what they are going through right now? A community where youth are delaying the use of or not using substances, including cannabis, EVP, and alcohol. Washington County youth tend to use substances at higher rates than the state, including past 30-day use of alcohol, cannabis, and electronic vapor products. If you've heard about the vaping crisis, it is so real. And it is absolutely happening in Berry. And what we know is that punitive consequences for vaping don't work. That just really doesn't support young people in becoming people who are not smokers. And one of the reasons for that is because EVP, electronic vape products, are so much more addicting than cigarettes, or even e-cigarettes at an earlier juncture, that only one time is what it takes to get addicted. So at this point in time, you may have been a young person who tried a cigarette and said, no, I don't like that. That's not for me. That's not really possible with vapes. If you try it, the likelihood that you will be addicted, if you try it before you're 18, is very high. And the likelihood that you will then be addicted to nicotine for the rest of your life is also very high. So tobacco companies are generating new customers with same-old tricks. And you may have seen, I wrote an op-ed that was in Vermont Digger a couple of weeks ago, supporting the flavored tobacco ban. And when that comes around again, I would really hope that you would... And when that comes around again, I would really hope that you would consider it. And one of the reasons it is particularly important in our region is that for every dollar that is spent on prevention money, $7 in public burden is saved. So it really makes sense for us to be talking about the proactive nature of prevention in our community and what can be done, both economically and physically, for our community. So I did share some other handouts with you. I do have the Coalition Effectiveness handout that talks about how that money, how that statistic was determined. And one thing, just as you're thinking about this, Washington County in the 1990s had nine prevention coalitions. Central Vermont New Directions Coalition is the only remaining prevention coalition in Washington County. So we're underfunded. We don't have great candidates for some of the licensures that we need in order to have really talented, dedicated substance use prevention professionals in our community. And there are many ways that you all could be involved in that.
So if you might be able to talk a little bit about the closing of Central Vermont Substance Abuse and what is going on to kind of...
Yeah.
You know, alleviate that burden on providers and really allow people to get the services that they're trying to receive.
I don't feel qualified to speak on that, to be honest, and I don't want to give you misinformation, but what I would suggest is that if you are at all interested in learning more about that from people who would know, the Central Vermont Prevention Coalition is an open meeting, and they would welcome you to come, and I'm happy to send you an invite to the next meeting so that you can ask that question.
Sure.
They serve lunch.
I meant to me, too.
So that is a little bit about the way that we are working right now. I would also just like to name one other thing, which is that I applied for and received a grant to provide free community screenings of Bess O'Brien's new documentary, Just Getting By, which touches on housing insecurity and the food crisis that Vermonters are currently experiencing. If you're wondering why I would do that for a prevention coalition, I hope that it becomes more and more clear that these are interrelated problems. People who are experiencing housing insecurity and food insecurity are more likely to be trafficked, they're more likely to be victims of sexual assault, and they're more likely to suffer from addiction. And the reason for that is that the top three reasons that feature in addiction, that lead to addiction, are physical and emotional abuse, childhood trauma, and a tragic loss. So all of those things are compounded by housing crisis and by food insecurity. Thank you.
Questions? Yes?
I'm really glad to hear that you are bringing Just Getting By to Berry City. It's my understanding that portions of it were filmed here in Berry City, and it hasn't had a screening here yet. Do you have any concrete plans on that that you can share yet?
So I have two screenings in Montpelier at the Savoy, because they were able to offer us space. I have not found one in Berry. I have gone to the Vermont Historical Society. I'm hoping that there'll be a free community screening there.
No? I'm sorry, that's my day job.
Oh.
That's why we're laughing.
Then I would love for you to help me arrange a screening.
Certainly. It wouldn't have come to me. I do a slightly different thing, but certainly connect with me afterwards, please.
And then there will be one showing, I campaigned really hard for this, at the Waterbury State Office Complex for state employees. The film does a really great job of not only laying out how we got to this place, but the systems-level issues that the state has let go on longer, that are now community burdens, and so it was really important for me, for that money, to ensure that state employees were seeing that. So there will be two screenings, June 19th and June 20th, at the Savoy Theater. Tickets are free. You do have to register, and if you reach out to me, I'm happy to share that with you. They'll be at 7:00 PM, and they will be followed by a Q and A with Bess O'Brien.
So as a side note, I tried to go the first time that that movie was shown at the Savoy, and the tickets were sold out, or the reservations were booked. So I emailed the director directly and said, why can't we get this in Berry? And she indicated that it was going to be here on Thursday, June 27th, at the Opera House. Is that not the case, or you don't know?
I don't know. That could be through a different grant that I am not responsible for.
So just for people to understand, I think it is coming to Berry at Opera House.
I did try and see if it would be possible for me to do a public showing in Courier Park. I came to the clerk's office last week and picked up. However, what I am now aware of, and I should know this, being from Randolph, is that it's late before it gets dark now. And these funds have to be spent before the end of June. So it feels really challenging for me to do an outdoor screening that I'm invited community people to, and recognizing that childcare and capacity will make that an issue.
So if it's going to be at the Opera House on the 27th, it's just another opportunity in addition to the two that you're offering as well?
Yes, and I would say, I've talked about this movie, I'm sure, to the point of irritation with everyone that I have spoken with in the last couple of months since I was able to see it. And one of the things that I feel really aware of is that some of the response that I've gotten is that Berry's living this. They don't need to see it. And I understand and appreciate that perspective, but the thing about the documentary that is particularly moving, it is devastating to watch, is the layout of what can be done to move us forward, and what the state needs to do to help all communities struggling with these interrelated crises. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Teddy has his hand.
Teddy?
Yep, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and my day job is at Hunger Free Vermont, so thank you very much for your words about food and housing insecurity. And I just wanted to, it's my understanding Mosaic is having an event this Thursday in the new space.
We are.
And so just wanted to give you a chance to plug that as well.
Thank you. We're having an open house. We're celebrating our move into our new location on Washington Street. I will just say, we are not a drop-in facility right now. You know, our flood and our move and our staffing situation, so if you are interested in attending, I would be happy to send you the invite, but also as a safety concern, we're not sharing our address really publicly right now. We support survivors and want to ensure that they feel safe coming to our location. But we are having an open house, and we are asking that folks bring a perennial to help us bring a little light and greenery into our new space. And we welcome you all there. Snacks. We'll have snacks.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I see Sam is...
Oh, Sam?
Thanks for coming, Sultana. And I just wondered if there was one thing that the city could do or support, that would be really helpful for prevention. What do you think that would be?
A free public space for young people to come would be one of the most incredible things that could happen for this community. Providing a space where young people can come, where they can be together, where they can follow their passions and their interests. We just, we don't have that kind of support right now, or infrastructure, and we're seeing the impact of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Council, we'll move to item 8C on the agenda. That is the infill study report, CVRPC. How are you?
Nicholas, I updated the...
Oh, you did? Oh, you're going to test my technology skills, huh?
We have faith in you.
I'm not worried about viruses or anything being passed around. It's pretty...
Let me pull it up here.
All right, so I guess we'll link to that.
Give me one sec to pull this up.
Get in shape here.
Okay.
Thanks, Nicholas.
Yep, thank you.
So, hi, everyone. I'm Eli Tui with CVRPC, and...
I'm Brian Voight, Senior Planner and Program Manager, also at CVRPC.
And I'm a Community Development Planner. So this infill analysis started off with a partnership between Berry City staff, who came to us at CVRPC, along with the Berry Housing Task Force, and we got funding from the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board to support the development of housing for near-long-term flood recovery, to meet the needs of affected residents, and ensure no net loss in housing units or residential grand list value as buyouts, new housing investments, and land use policy alternatives are considered. There was a prioritization for development in areas currently served by street, water, and sewer infrastructure. Yeah, next slide, sorry.
Sorry.
And there were a couple of deliverables that were the intention of this analysis. The first was to do an inventory of vacant municipally-owned parcels, and so we'll go through what we broke down for that, to identify parcels that do not contain a building within the municipal boundaries, fronting an existing built street. And then the deliverable two was looking at prospective subdivision opportunities under the current zoning and the home act, so mapping subdivisible parcels. I want to just have a caveat right here that this is not saying you shall build on these parcels. This is just looking at areas in the city that could have buildings put on them, could be subdivitable.
Next slide. So how did we accomplish this? We, as Eli mentioned, we met with other project partners. We identified a number of different data resources that folks thought would be interesting to have at the parcel scale. So again, our unit of analysis here really is the parcel, be they municipally-owned or private property. So we looked at initially some development readiness or development-enabling factors. There's a pretty long list of those here, including things like the base and overlay zoning districts, state-designated areas, TIF district, the low and middle-income block groups, where more than 51% low or middle-income residents live within a block group, environmental justice-focused populations, again, the distinctly identified vacant parcels owned by the municipality, any buildings that are considered vacant by the city, red-tagged structures, substantially damaged structures, and then properties where the owner has indicated an interest in some form of a buyout post-storm. So in order to accomplish that whole bunch of words, we gathered some data and brought that into our geographic information system, and I essentially overlaid those data sets on top of the parcel data. And so here's an example. In the middle of the image on the left, I've got a parcel highlighted in yellow. The background color everywhere that you see is green. There's no development-limiting factor in that case, where you see pink or blue. The pink are development-limiting factors. Blue represent existing structures. So if you look at the table over on the right, and it's a pretty long record for each of the 3,300 or so parcels in the city, we've got all the information that we've just referenced here, related to zoning districts, environmental justice populations, vacancies, lower-middle-income structures, whether or not a structure is red-tagged, and on and on down the list. And then if we look at the bottom here, we see the information, single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, three, four-family dwelling, so all of those, the potential for development on said parcel. And then the last thing I'll draw your attention to here is at the top of the red box on the right-hand side, where I display an area for development. So basically, we're looking at that area within the parcel that might still be developable. It's outside of any of the existing restrictions, and I'll talk more about that here in a minute. Now, the other piece, the...
Good.
Yes, please, thanks. The, oh, I forgot about that. I thought I was controlling it here, and I was on a roll, too.
Is this where you are?
Let's start over. So the flip side of the development-enabling factors are those factors that might limit the potential future development of a location. And so for that, we looked at things like steep slopes, flood hazard areas and floodways, whether or not a parcel was in a river corridor, or included a small stream riparian buffer. Are there any wetlands on the parcels? Is the parcel a conserved land? And has there been a landslide identified on said parcel? And so you can just flip to the next one here. So for each one of those factors, and we won't go through them factor by factor, but again, it's this concept of taking the base data set, overlaying that on the parcels to identify whether or not a particular limiting factor has an effect on a parcel. So if you could just scroll through the next several, the flood hazard areas, you can just keep on going, river corridors and small streams. Wetlands, the city, it's a mixed blessing of sorts. If you want to develop, there are very few wetlands that you have to be worried about. If you're more worried about flood mitigation, there are very few wetlands that you really should be worrying about. But again, wetland's not a big factor here. Same with protected land, very few parcels that are in a protected status. The building footprints that you see here in blue, again, considering those a development-limiting factor, unless, of course, you're talking about the tear-down of a building and starting fresh on a parcel. So all of those limiting factors combine, again, at that parcel scale, just like I showed for the development potential factors. And again, we summarize those values, and in that bottom table on the right, I have noted percent development restriction. So for a particular parcel, we have identified the amount of that parcel that's not able to be developed due to one of those development-limiting factors that we just presented. Next slide. This is what it looks like, a small snapshot of the city, when we combine all of those various development-limiting factors. Next slide. And if we look at the city as a whole, it is a bit alarming, but again, some of these can be overcome. Some of these you might think twice about ignoring, but 53, almost 54% of the city has at least one development-limiting factor. So this is by area, not by the count of parcels. So I like this slide, not necessarily for the shock value, but to say, you know, we have some limitations that we're facing here, but there are also plenty of opportunities as well across the landscape. Next slide. So in terms of our deliverables, and you can go one more, Nicholas, thank you, we separate the deliverables into the municipal property analysis and the private property analysis. We identified 141 municipally-owned properties, removed quite a few of them from consideration because they were things like road rightaways, just, you know, digging into the nuts and bolts and fun of the grand lists and parcel data in general, so really trying to narrow that down to properties that actually represent potential development opportunities. 93 of those parcels are vacant, and then you see the zoning class, or sorry, the zoning district, and the amount of developable space within those various districts on the municipal properties. Now, we take this one step further and distinguish between small properties and large properties. So if we're looking at properties between 1,500 and 5,000 square feet of available space for development, so again, not the size of the parcel, but how much of the parcel remains open to potential development. There's 19 parcels that meet that criteria, again, that range of zoning districts that we see here, a couple each in the Historic Central Business Design Review District and Central Business Design Review District. Three of them are in the downtown, and those same three are also in the TIF district. Next slide, please. And then this is what the sort of end result looks like, not just this one snapshot, but again, this information for every parcel, where we've identified these municipal, small municipal parcels with some existing capacity for additional development. And I intentionally obfuscate the parcels. The point of tonight is not to talk specifically about one parcel and what could be done there. It's really to hammer home that we've identified parcels with potential for further development that might meet some of the city's needs. Next slide. Sorry, one more. Yeah, thanks. And then in terms of the larger properties, 18 of those parcels with more than 5,000 square feet of available space for development, same sort of mix and match of summary information here, with the added piece of information about the low and middle-income neighborhoods, 10 of these larger properties are located within these low and moderate-income neighborhoods. Next slide. So here are examples... And then in terms of the larger properties, 18 of those parcels with more than 5,000 square feet of available space for development, same sort of mix and match of summary information With the added piece of information about the low and middle income neighborhoods, 10 of these larger properties have, are located within these low and moderate income neighborhoods. Next slide. So here's, here are examples of what those parcels look like. Again, the parcels themselves, there are some fairly interestingly configured parcels that would likely present challenges for development, but, you know, we're in tough times and it calls for creative solutions. And so the parcel on the left, about a half acre, it's sort of a long and skinny lot. The parcel on the right that's highlighted and labeled with the .17 acres, that is, that's actually a parking lot, under, I believe, active consideration right now. And I point this one out because it's adjacent to another municipally-owned lot, and there could be, as part of any development plan there, consideration of adjustment of lot lines to accommodate potentially more space for development for the parcel that we see here in the center. Next slide, you can go one more. Thank you. On the private property front, we looked for, well, we looked at a number of different things, but there are 5,000, oh, I'm sorry, about 1,400 parcels with more than 5,000 square feet of available space for development. We removed the conservation and industrial district parcels because of their restrictions on residential development, removed some other publicly-owned parcels like the school district, or the state of Vermont, or any federal office space. And then we see the tabulation there of the parcels and their zoning districts. And if you go, next slide. And that, this slide represents the zoning districts and the available space for development within said district. So the first one was the number of parcels within that particular zoning district, and this follow-on slide is the amount of space available for development in those zoning districts. And note that there are plenty of downtown parcels that fit the bill here, as well as more than 400 of the low and moderate income parcels located in low and moderate income neighborhoods as well. Next slide, please. So what do we get out of this analysis of the private property? Sort of present, I think, four different case scenarios here. We've got these parcels that have a relatively modest amount of additional space for development, but certainly are suitable for the construction of an accessory dwelling unit. And here's an example of what that parcel might look like. Next slide. We've got parcels that certainly look ripe for potential development, but they are constrained by the current zoning bylaws. So in this case, it certainly seems likely that we could fit another residential unit on the left side of that parcel, but that would also create a flagpole lot, which is something that's not currently allowed for under your, on your zoning bylaws. And then, next slide. And then there's the unconstrained parcels. And these could be for any number of reasons, configured the way they are for any number of reasons. But in all likelihood, many of these are double lots. So if we were to do additional research, go back in time, it might be the case that a property owner bought an adjacent lot, merged the parcels, and forgot all about that. Maybe it's not even the same property owner as the original owner that did that. But other parcels like this, again, this doesn't necessarily have to mean that this is a double lot, but it is a consideration and a potential next step that the city might consider to look for these double lots, evaluate whether or not structures are on both sides of the double lot, and do some outreach around a notion like that. Next slide. And then the last of these are the sort of the large lots. Not a whole lot of these large private lots with the potential for a lot of development, but there are a handful of them out there. I'm guessing that most of you probably know where they are. They probably have a lot longer backstory than I know about. So again, not wanting to debate the merits of any individual parcel, but there are a handful of these parcels that meet this sort of large lot standard where you could try to encourage a property owner or work with a property owner to engage in a subdivision and bring in some additional residential development that way. Next slide, thanks. The last couple of slides here just relate to the reporting. Again, we've broken this out into deliverables one and two. The deliverables themselves will be, take a couple of different forms. Primarily, there will be tables that represent this parcel-level inventory with all of the information that we discussed already. In addition, we have played around with the idea of developing maps, and those could be either static maps that you print out on paper, or I think what would be more useful for the city, but certainly up to you all to determine, would be an interactive map. So basically, a web map that CVRPC would put together that includes all of those municipal properties and all the details of said properties for deliberation in a public setting. Moving on to the private property, I would encourage the city and the council to take a little bit more of a cautious approach with the data that they put out here. Again, reminding folks that this was an analysis of potential for development, not an analysis to tell people that they need to develop their property in a specific way. And so we're trying to be extremely sensitive to that distinction. And so you see a few things here in bold text at the bottom of the list. Again, all the bullets are really reflecting those data points that we mentioned at the top of the presentation. But essentially, my proposal here and from the project team is that for things like span numbers, owner of record, mailing address, parcel value, homestead declarations, yes, it is all public information. But the last thing that we want from this effort is for folks to start knocking on doors, saying, "There was a study, and they said you should develop your property." Because that is not what this is about. I think that the city would benefit from having this type of information, primarily the city and the housing task force primarily to conduct some additional research on the suitability of a given parcel for additional development, as well as to conduct outreach to property owners whose parcels look like they may be ripe for potential development. So working on other programs within the city, or bringing other opportunities to those private property owners for decision-making on their own accord. With that, the project team from CVRPC would include Eli, myself, Will Pitkin, who's in the back of the room there, and Christian Meyer, who's also ex officio member there, also mostly in the back of the room. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Counselor?
I have a question, but it's not pertaining to this. It was a question that came up last week, because I don't honestly know. This is my second, third meeting, so forgive me. The Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, that's what you, that's who you are.
Yes.
One of the questions that I have that I continue to ask is, how do we know what kind of housing we need? And is that something that you would help us, or how do we figure that out? Because we keep talking about we need more housing, but I think we need to be more specific about the kind of housing we need. Do we need more starter homes? Do we need more apartments? Do we need more affordable homes? Do we need more, you know, the next level after starter home? I'm just curious where the pinch point is that we are facing, and how do we figure that out so we're building the housing that we need, not just what we think we need?
Sure. So that is outside the scope of this work, and I'm not trying to...
Oh, right. No, I get that.
I'm not trying to pass the buck on this.
No, I get that.
So that is something that we certainly could help you with. We'd probably need to find some other funding to support that work. We could also look for consulting firm that could do a similar type of analysis and...
Or Christian can say.
I'm gonna, so then, this isn't the only work we're doing with Berry City right now. We're also working on transit oriented development study in the downtown. Part of that study is market analysis that's currently underway with White and Burke. So we're hoping that would be exactly the kind of report that I think would help you and the city understand what the market, as best as they can estimate, is calling for.
Okay. Perfect.
More to come.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. It's a little bit old now, but Tess Taylor's here. The Housing Task Force did a white paper on this a year, two years ago. And, I mean, the short story is, we need a little bit of everything, all types of housing. I know that's not the best answer, but there's just lack of supply on, everywhere, yeah. But I can, I can, I can turn that around. I think it's, like I said, it's two years old, but it's still, I think, very relevant to a lot of the conversation.
With your connection with other regional planning commissions, are you aware of similar studies in other parts of the state? And what actions have other municipalities taken on those studies? Are we first? Is there any context for this beyond just Berry City?
I mean, certainly, there are other regional planning commissions doing build-out analyses, which is a little bit different than what we did here. So we're not, we're not, at the end of the day, saying you can fit X number of units in the city if you develop every square inch of possible space. I don't know of other regional planning commissions that are approaching the issue the way that we are, where we're essentially looking at what space needs to just be taken off the table, what space could be, could accommodate new development with changes in zoning regulation, or elevated construction to eliminate the flood hazard restrictions, things like that. So, you know, I don't have necessarily a direct comparison there, but I do think that what this data offers the city and the housing task force is a more constrained view of what is potentially developable in the city, and that an outreach program could be built around that. Certainly, additional context, like what type of housing is, would be very valuable for that. But I believe that, you know, what we've produced here is a very solid one and a half to two steps away from the start line of this project, and should empower city staff and the housing task force to dive deeper into the findings and really conduct some targeted outreach to property owners that may have a desire to develop and might not even know what potential their property holds for them.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very interesting.
Can I do that? Just the other one.
Yes.
Thank you. So on behalf of the housing task force, we thank the regional planning commission for this study. It was, it was quite a process, and I'm so glad to be part of it. But one of the other things that we talked about was, sort of jokingly, but not really, but maybe the next step also is to talk about upfill. We look at our downtown, we have so many different buildings that are, you know, we've got empty spaces in the buildings, but we also have short buildings that maybe could be built up. So we're talking about maybe seeing if we can get some interns along some point that could help us with that kind of information as well. Just wanted...
And I just want to point out, I mean, this was a huge lift for them. We've been fortunate to get updates throughout the process for the last several weeks, and it's just the amount of work that the team did was phenomenal. And it's just a huge resource for us. I think we talked about it at the staff level as it's a playbook for the planning commission and sort of, sort of, you know, teed it up for us to sort of take the next step. So we couldn't have done this in the time period that they did it. So just really grateful for this incredible data work, data-driven work.
Thanks. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Counsel, that brings us to item 8D on the agenda. This is the river program presentation. Same one, same drive.
You have, what's, Berry, River Berry City? Yes.
Give me one sec. I did it in the reverse order.
Okay. It's a little bit lagged, but we'll be up here soon.
Okay. Well, I'd better start it. I don't have a lot, a lot to add to this conversation. Christian Meyer with the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. I'm here with Keith Coven, my colleague, and Roy Schiff from SLR, and Will Pitkin, as noted before, one of our junior planners, to talk about the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Nicholas mentioned it earlier in the meeting. This is $90 million coming to the state, no local match. So we're going to talk a little bit more about how Keith Coven and Roy Schiff from SLR can help you access that $90 million with no match. So I think I've hit all my talking points. Bye, Keith.
Okay. So there's actually the River Program, which, let's see, I won't even try to give you the acronym for it, but it's built on resiliency for the flood. The goal was to implement projects to lessen overall flood volumes. This is an advanced assistance program. So for those larger projects, you basically have to have engineering to get that grant into the FEMA HMGP program. You know, bridges, those sort of things, as Nicholas mentioned, you basically have to have some pre-engineering to get any of those grant applications in. So the strategy for the River Program overall was to do a public process, come to the towns. Due to all the public meetings that we've had with flooding, actually, in our region, we chose not to hold the initial public meetings that were originally planned. We were just wanting to harvest all those ideas, though, any ideas for flood mitigation. And ideally, you know, any of the HMGP applications have to go up to the state, the state has to approve those before those get sent on to FEMA. So BEM is kind of the caretaker of that $90 million. This program is being directly funded by them to provide that advanced assistance that the towns within the region. And we, for the advanced assistance, we're directly reaching out to both Montpelier and Berry City. The program overall reached to, it was, the intention was to reach out to the hardest-hit communities and provide that advanced assistance to make sure you're being able to mitigate flooding where necessary. We're creating a list of projects. Roy Schiff is here with us tonight. He's actually looking at the overall floodway and special flood hazard area, and trying to also determine if there's any pinch points or anything where, you know, if we could do a targeted project could benefit. If you go to the next slide. And this, this is mainly for five types of projects. So, you know, buyouts and removals, which you already have the buyouts that people have actually, you know, contacted, and they want to have a property buyout. This is for, also for if you have a targeted property where you were able to determine that if we actually chose to buy out this property, you know, yes, it is going to remove from the grand list, but it could directly overall impact flood, flood depths. Same with elevation of buildings. I know the city has already created a list of some structures, and it appears that was funded in the state's budget. But also relocations of buildings, so completely moving a building, or even possibly roads, floodproofing of businesses and other structures. Floodproofing is only for non-residential structures, but, you know, to harden our business districts so that they can withstand another flood, you know, and we don't end up with gutted towns. And improving the flood channels, so that's the big one, you know, increasing that floodplain access where available. And that can be dam removal, berm removal, any constrictions that we can determine that would allow that water to leave the town and not back up and flood our downtown suburbs. Next slide, please. And just a couple examples of what those could possibly look like. I mean, for the floodproofing of buildings, that can possibly install floodgates or some level of protection there. And I know you mentioned stormwater connections, you know, even installing check valves on buildings so you're not getting that backflow that come, that ended up flooding a number of municipal buildings throughout the region. You know, just hardening our entire infrastructure to hopefully lessen any future damages. And I think there's one more slide. Actually, just two more. We want to work with any groups that, you know, the long-term recovery groups, we've been reaching out to all of them as well, just to make sure if they have any ideas, that we can try to address those as well. Trying to get, you know, get any ideas that are out there in. We just want to be able to kind of look through everything, you know, make sure we're not leaving any stems unturned. We're obviously wanting to coordinate directly with the city. And, you know, originally, when this started, we thought there would be a town match, obviously, from the state's budget. We have the great news of, you know, there is no match for any of these projects that will be picked. And, you know, obviously, we want a designated point person for each community, so any contact that we have, we have that person. that we have, we have that person. In Montpelier currently, we're primarily dealing with John Copens and Josh Jerome. Hopefully, we can set up a similar arrangement here in Berry City where we have a point person that we're directly communicating with. And actually, there is one more slide, because with that change, with the match, there are also, there are some tier-two hazard mitigation projects. These don't qualify for advanced assistance, but these still do qualify under the entire hazard mitigation program. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of those as well. There is a website, it's flood, or, no, flood, RiverProjects.org, and I forgot they actually put the link on the slide, but there is a survey there as well, if anybody's interested in putting in an idea.
Roy, would you like to introduce your role in this process at all, or do you cover it?
Sure. Happy to.
Here, please take it. You got it.
Okay.
Hey, everyone. Roy Schiff, I'm a water resource engineer with a company called SLR Consulting, based out of water. I've been doing river flood mitigation work and restoration for, worked for about 20 years in Vermont and around the region, worked through Irene and now the recent floodings. So, our main role, as Keith said, is to really compile all the flood mitigation alternatives that have been discussed. A few have bubbled up in today's meeting on other subjects, the trestle and others. And then, what we want to do is come back to you all and sort of prioritize those. We're going to put our prioritization on them based on how they'll lower flood levels. In, in cities like Berry, I'm from Montpelier, we've worked all over the state, you know, lowering the flood levels a little bit actually translates to a lot of money and damage saved, and there's critical thresholds, floors and basements, and that's how FEMA grades its damage assessment. So, we're going to try to do some initial estimating on what activities would lower flood levels by either creating storage and spots or moving water out of the city into other areas where there isn't as much development. There's talk of floodplain restorations all over the Stevens Branch, there's some relic dams around that change local flood levels, so we'll try to bring all those things that you all have talked about and that we can drum up and then prioritize the list, and really, the projects that bubble to the top will help eventually prepare applications for funding through the federal government to get those projects. We've done this a lot around the state, big road resiliency projects, work with Northfield on a big floodplain restoration project that reportedly dropped flood levels a little bit in the last flood, so happy to be here and try to help as much as we can.
Yes, sir.
She can go first.
Sure. I just, clarifying question about the process of the program and the funding available. The $90 million, is that available to do the advanced assistance pre-engineering work and then apply for further FEMA money, or is the $90 million pot, the entire pot that exists to carry out this work?
The $90 million is the entire pot for the whole state. It's based off of 15% of any public assistance damages from a disaster, FEMA automatically rolls that over into hazard mitigation.
And that's then to carry out the entirety of identified projects?
Yes. Yeah. The advanced assistance is to, basically, for those larger projects or any of the projects that require that advanced engineering, because hazard mitigation grant applications or other data-oriented applications, it's not the easiest of applications, and for a lot of those projects, you need that level of, some engineering to have been done just to be able to properly get the application through, because FEMA requires a benefit-cost analysis for any application, so you basically have to have some numbers to be able to even get in, in the door to have that conversation with them.
And is part of this $90 million funding available to do that advanced assistance, or is that up to municipalities?
Yes. Yeah, part of that $90, and a small piece of that is being used for the advanced assistance. The state has already keyed that up across the state.
Two questions. First one is just more of a clarifying question. I hear FEMA and the state being thrown around in this discussion, is this state money or FEMA money?
This is FEMA money.
Okay, wonderful. That leads me to my next question. We're talked about raising bridges here in the city to help with some of that flood hazard mitigation. Is that something that you guys have also looked into to potentially help out with?
As I say, I don't know if you've looked into it yet, but it's definitely something on the table. Yes.
Yeah. I think infrastructure work around the roads and some of the rivers and there's, you know, old walls and that's all fair game for these projects that have happened in the past, so.
Okay. And my next question is, is this also money available for landslide stuff? I know we had some landslide stuff over on Railroad, so maybe, I'm not sure if we can look at the railroad bed and any of that property and kind of add that into...
So, for the hazard mitigation grant program, yes, that can be, that can definitely look at landslides. The, the River Program, though, actually is just looking at flood mitigation. So, the advanced assistance piece, that, the way this, this was set up, is actually set up originally by BEM and Two Rivers, and then kind of, in each region, that RPC is handling it, but it's just designed for the flood mitigation piece for the advanced assistance part.
As a stackwell.
So, how extensive a project can it be? Can it be like you want to create river buffers, plus you want to raise the bridges, and you want to move your DPW building? Can it be like out of the floodway? How extensive can it be?
So, technically, those would go as three separate projects, but, yeah, you could apply, you know, we could try to get, you know, five projects in Berry City. Obviously, they're going to go up to BEM, they're going to look at it across the entire state, try to get the, basically, the best return they can get on that money. You know, I mean, obviously, you know, it'd be great if we had $90 million just to spend in Berry City, you know, because then we can make real, you know, huge change, that, you know, we have to share with everyone else. But, yeah, the better...
Not necessarily.
It'd be nice. But the better projects that are there, you know, and coming out of this, any projects that aren't funded by FEMA, we're, are going to try to look for other funding sources, you know, whether, A, we can find possibly clean water monies that might be able to help with, you know, like berm removal or something. If we can fit it into a different pot of funding that we know that's out there at the, after we basically get the hazard mitigation funding spent, we're going to continue to still try to see what other mitigation actions we can do with other funding pools that are out there. And, and the state did reallocate, I think it's $38 million for what, what previously was called the Flood Resilience Community Fund. It has a new name. I haven't delved into the budget to see what the new name was on it, but I know there's $38 million state money set aside for that as well, and that kind of fits into those projects that don't fit quite into FEMA, gives the state a little more flexibility to be able to fund mitigation throughout the state.
Okay, sorry to use up your time, but to be perfectly clear, so there's no harm in the city saying, here's all the things that would make a, that would have a big impact, and then you would evaluate their effectiveness in terms of flood mitigation?
Yes, that's, that's actually what we want, you know.
Counsel, there's actually a great, if you go to the Vermont Emergency Management webpage, there's actually a great description of exactly what types of projects are eligible and also a copy of the pre-application and the, and a description of the pre-application process. So, Vermont Emergency Management, just go to their webpage, they've got a great section on it. Pat Moulton.
Thank you, Mayor Lozan. I just, and thank you very much, Keith and Roy and Christian, for this presentation. This is an exciting opportunity. I just want to clarify a couple of points. This is funding that's available for all 251 towns in Vermont, this hazard mitigation program. It's not just those who were affected by flooded floods last July, and it's not just flood money. So, just technically, those are a couple of things, and, and the match that would normally be, we hope only 10%, is being covered, my understanding, by state funds, that the budget that Governor Scott proposed and the legislature approved provides for that match. So, it's a phenomenal opportunity, and just to give you a little context, after Tropical Storm Irene, I understand the hazard mitigation program Monday, Monday was $35 million. So, this is a great boost from a horrible disaster, frankly, money we hope we don't see again because of the disaster, but it's also a great opportunity to, for the city to start prioritizing what are those things that are really going to hopefully bend the needle for protecting Berry City when the next one comes. Thank you.
Great. And as an aside, I was really grateful to the governor and the administration for pushing that pre-application deadline back.
Yes.
Because I was, it was keeping, I mean, we got a lot of work to do, and I was just concerned that we weren't going to make it. So, for, for the city of Berry and I think for a lot of other municipalities, I mean, you know, that was huge to get that extra, it's not quite two months, but close enough, that was big. So, thank you for that. Yes, ma'am?
It's on, yes, ma'am.
Two questions. One, we have reports, they were referenced earlier tonight. Do you start out by looking at those, the reports that have already sort of come through and things that we've done and things that we haven't done?
Yes.
To determine? Okay. And then, do you look at things regionally, because, you know, we apply as Berry City, but I'm assuming that, you know, the impact, the things that we do are going to impact people downstream from us and vice versa, like, you know, the people upstream from us, so on and so on. So, do you apply just as a municipality, or can you apply as a region?
For the hazard mitigation grants, you generally apply as a municipality.
Okay.
But, yes, we are looking upstream, trying to see if there's any places, you know, where we can, you know, get that storage, reconnect floodplanes, those sort of things where, you know, it's going to that by that time, because realistically, that's what you're trying to do, is just slow down the discharge of the water. So, if you can, you know, stabilize it where it's at, where it's going to bleed into the, either the Winuski or the Stevens Branch or J.O. Branch, you know, slower, that's going to, you know, it, it gives it that time that the water, has time to get out of the way, you know, basically, and that's, that's the problem is with our constrained river valleys, you know, it's backing up because there's just not enough flow capacity.
Okay.
Add that a little bit. One of the beauties of this being a zero-match program is that if the city of Berry knows that project that's going to make a big difference downtown, but it's outside the town borders, we can go to the other town, because we're not asking for the 10% match on a $5 million project, there's no match. We're much more likely to get that cooperation across town lines, so it really is kind of a straw that stirs the drink in this case, and I think it's going to make a big difference regional.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
So, I know that, you know, that Berry City was the most damaged municipality in the state from this past year's flooding, and we have no shortage of projects, we've already discussed, and I'm sure you've already seen, so I'm hoping to hear from the state a strong commitment that a portion, a strong portion of these funds will come to Berry City. I know it's an application process, and I know we have to go through a lot of steps, but I would hope the state would commit to that.
One, one thing I'd say is, there's a, there's a formula for how these projects are graded in hazard mitigation world, and that's the benefit-cost ratio, the FEMA BC that Keith mentioned, and it's really how much damage can you avoid for the cost of a project? And I think there's a lot of projects in the area that would have a lot, a lot of flood mitigation benefit, so sort of, our, our goal is to call through all the lists that you've all developed, meet with you, find things we didn't miss, think of other ideas, and then organize those in how we think the flood mitigation and that benefit-cost ratio will be maximized. For these kinds of pots, there are certain kinds of projects, they tend to be costs, big costing projects that have big changes, and if, if a project you do in Berry City does limit damages in Berlin, you get credit for that in your benefit-cost ratio. So, we're going to look for big things that can have impacts, bigger, you know, big benefits, and those will score high and, and have the highest potential to get funded. And, you know, we've worked a lot with BEM, with many municipalities, so I feel like we kind of know this, this, and have learned a little bit about the flood, and we'll learn a lot, a lot more from you all, so it's a good step forward. We'll work hard to bring some good projects here.
It's great work, and we appreciate it very much. We look forward to working with you. And, well, I guess, what can we do to, what can we do to help you? What can we do to make your work easier?
I guess, as I say, just really, any, any of the ideas that came out of any of those forums, if we could just get, you know, basically, a complete list, I think I have most of the town plans already. We've already been doing the background research to collect any studies that we're aware of. I'll probably reach out to Janet to make sure I've got everything, but, you know, make sure that we've coordinated that, you know, because we obviously would rather run forward instead of having to redo a project that's already been done. But, yeah, just, you know, if, as the city council, if you, if you just want to remain in contact to be with Nicholas, that's fine, you know, however you want to handle that as the city council, we just want to make sure we have that point person so that any communication with the city is being done, you know, the way you all choose to have that happen.
However, it's most efficient.
Yeah.
Eddie, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. First of all, there's definitely a, I'm still working on the thought, but there's definitely a DPW complex tie-in here somewhere, and that's a big chunk of that 90, but man, that's a lot of water could go over there if we can move DPW complex somewhere else. My actual question was for Nicholas of the, you might not have this answer right at your fingertips, so we can like follow up with an email after the meeting, but of the identified, the projects we've already identified as potential buyouts for, not redevelopment, but for these flood mitigation projects, do you, I just don't remember offhand, do you remember the rough number that all of those buyouts represented?
The value of the buyouts? I don't off the top of my head, but, but, yeah, those, those are, I mean, they're, they're going to, they're, they're high. They're, they're obviously very high, because there, there's several properties along, it's five properties along River Street, four properties on Harrington, and then, and so, so that's, I mean, that's, it's significant, and then there's several along North Main Street as well that are non-developable, that are right where the, the water could, could go. So, I, I don't remember the exact number, Counsel Wazazak, but they're, they're pricey.
Yeah, because my thought is, you know, to Counselor Dustin's point about, you know, I think it is equitable that Berry get a good, you know, we won't get all of it, I don't know that we'll get half of it, but getting a good chunk of this 90 feels equitable. And to, you know, Mayor Lozan's point about early bird gets the worm, squeaky wheel gets the grease, whatever metaphor you want to use, if we can go into this application process early with a very clear targeted number of, hey, this many millions of dollars plus $30 million for the DPW complex would make a incalculable impact on Berry City's ability to survive into the future, which might just be stating the obvious, but, you know, if we can get out there early with good numbers and, you know, get our hands to be one of the first in that pot, I just think it increases our odds of getting a more significant amount of the money, regardless of what it is, right? Like, just basic, I know this isn't a negotiation, but if that number is $60 million, well, let's go ask for $60 million and see how much of it we get. I don't want us to be conservative in our asks, in our application is more my point.
We'd take the whole 90. I mean, it is that bad. I mean, we could, you know, I mean, I could easily tick off $40 million for the projects without flood mitigation projects, without, without rebuilding anything in the north end. I mean, the price tag is that big, as you, as both of you certainly well know, when you look at the cost of, you know, and even the challenge of moving the bridge on Berlin Street, and how do you, how do you feather the road into it? It's not a, you know, it's just not a small project. But, you know what? But I look forward to the conversation very much, and thank you. Yes, sir.
Mayor Lozan, if I could just follow up, I, I found the number that Counselor Wazazak asked about, and for the Vine Scampini area, the buyouts total 1.7 million for Gunners Brook, there are about 900,000 for River Granite Street, there are about 1.5. They've all gone up a little bit, because this was a February 27th number. Since then, we've had a couple of people who've applied for buyouts who I think saw these maps, and they have moved into the application process as well, so that's, 4 million is on the low end at this point, based on, based on these figures here.
And that's buyout, not mitigation?
That's buyout, that's buyout.
Not mitigation at all.
Not mitigation. Yeah, and with, with the team here, we've talked about really, priority being the culverts upsizing and needing to do a hydrology study for that, just to, you know, it's important to get the water out of here quickly, safely, and then, of course, the bridges, as those have been the two point... have been the two points of content. The buyouts are, they're ongoing through other streams as well, so that's why they're sort of, not that they're not a priority, but for this particular pot of money, we're, we're focusing on the culverts and the, and the bridges.
Yes, and actually, we'll want to try to coordinate the locations of those buyouts, just so we can be aware of where that's going to actually add, you know, because that's, through the buyout process has to become green space, so that we can definitely use that in thinking about that flood plane increase that will be happening with those buyouts.
So, there are a significant number of grants, I mean, in terms of grant dollars, you know, EPA has, has their grant, $2 billion grant, they haven't awarded anything yet, we've been talking to the city of Montpelier, thank you, Pat Moulton, I've been talking to the city of Montpelier about submitting a joint application in the, you know, $20 million range. How do you feel about our capacity to do all this work, and to get it done in a timely manner? Because it's, you know, my thought is, and this is what I'd like to talk about next week, council, is how do we either create our own capacity, and there are ways to do that, you know, so I guess the question is, do we currently have the capacity amongst existing staff? I think I know the answer to that question. Can we build the capacity, and how do we build the capacity? My biggest concern is, we're going to leave money on the table, and that's what I see happening right now.
Yeah. You would like to speak to that, or you want me to?
It sounded like a, it sounded like a question about Berry City management, so I didn't want to.
No, not really, not management, capacity. I mean, capacity in terms of our ability to complete grant applications in a timely manner. I mean, you know, I'll be very candid, I have been speaking to the administration about extending that due date, because I knew what was coming. If we had to submit those pre-application grants by June 21st, was it 21st or 28th? I keep getting 21st. No way. No way. And, you know, so we got a gift, and I'd like not to waste it.
Well, so the answer of capacity, there's regional capacity, we were in a conversation this morning with Pat, about exactly that, that was the team that can come together and make sure, for example, that $2 million change completed, the application gets done on Berry for a time, and we're ready to jump into that, right?
So, you, you've got a fairly high confidence level that we can submit these grant, we can submit a good competitive grant application? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to make sure that I understand your expectations of the city, and I, I just want to make sure that we are the best partner we can be, and, and, you know, and if we need to build capacity, you know, into our grant writing repertoire, then that's what we need to do.
It's an ongoing conversation, and I'm sure we have it early, if we have capacity, because the regional capacity is something that will come over here.
What are you doing next to you, then? I'll bring, I'll bring pizza and soda if you want to. No, and I, I mean, I really do want to continue this conversation, it's just so important.
Yeah, I think with the information that comes out of the scoping, we'll be able to at least get those grant applications in for the hazard mitigation. The, the pre-application is actually very easy, you don't need a lot of information to get that, but yeah, when you, like, once that, you know, once they say, okay, we want the full application, that is a much larger lift, or, you know, for any bridge or anything like that, those are pretty complex grant applications, they're a lot tougher than the average.
And then that leads to big infrastructure projects, when you get the grant, that is another challenge.
Yeah, yeah, because then your, your management of that grant on that end.
But that can be, that can be sub pursuant to, pursuant to the conditions of the grant. I mean, you know, we're, I mean, obviously, you know, we don't, if, if we, if we were fortunate enough to receive a $15 million mitigation contract, obviously, we're going to have to sub con, while the manager and the public works directors certainly have their role, they wouldn't be hands-on managing the project.
Exactly. But yeah, I'd say, I definitely think we can assist, you know, and realistically, the August date likely will be extended one more time. We, FEMA does allow extensions for those, and I know that Stephanie Smith at VM intends to try to, you know, I mean, obviously, they have to play ball, you know, FEMA will have to agree to that, but they expect to apply for another extension beyond that, so hopefully we can get everything, you know, in, in a timely manner, and, but I definitely think we should, you know, try to have that done by the August deadline, you know, not expect an extension, shoot for that one.
Yeah, I think the pre-application, I'm not quite as concerned about that as I am the, you know, then, then it's a big.
Don't give us a hard bit after that.
Then it's a lot of work, yeah. Awesome. Counsel, any other, oh, I'm sorry, Pat Moulton, excuse me.
No, no worries, and thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to comment that the capacity is significantly enhanced by the addition of SLR and their capability to do this work, which would have fallen to the city somehow. So, that's exciting, and to your point about the EPA grant, that is a heavy lift, because their performance criteria, you know, you have to be project-ready, and within 120 days of an award, you have to be starting, and, and those applications have to, to be competitive, have to get in by the end of July. So, a lot of work, a ton of work to do to, to make that happen, but, you know, we're not giving up, we're going to give it a shot, and then it's staying on top of every other grant, but I just, you know, this river project is unique to only 15 communities in Vermont, so, I mean, it is part of how Berry is already getting a little bit bigger piece of the pie than a lot of other communities, and, which is, which is exactly what we want to see happen between Berry, Montpelier, and the central Vermont region, but I just wanted to put that out there, so we're, we're lucky to have Roy and SLR working on this, along with, obviously, the Regional Planning Commission, we'd be lost without Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, so, huge help.
We're grateful for all of you. Pat, thank you very much. Sam Stockwell?
We just want to ask the city manager what he feels would be most helpful, what, what does he need, or does he feel like everything, it seems like he's already spent a lot of time and a lot of work in developing some of the, some of our needs and assessment of the needs, so I just wanted to ask him how he's feeling about the process.
Yeah, thanks, Counsel Stockwell, I mean, I think that a lot of these projects go in starts and fits, so, for example, you know, we, we came up with the, and the council discussed in February, the idea of the clusters on Second and Third Street, right? So, what happens there? We don't own any land there, we don't control any land there, so what we've done is we've, we've offered purchase and sales agreements to all those houses, we haven't gotten responses yet, so, really, until we do, you know, it's not that I'm not thinking about this, but it just, we have nothing to, we don't have a canvas, right, for, for that kind of project there. I think for the, you know, the, the other pieces, you know, if I could wave a magic wand, the capacity would be two people in Janet's office. Like, Janet is the perfect person to work on this, as, you know, on, on these types of applications, she's our grant coordinator, but she's doing three other jobs, right? So, really, the, you know, that's the, if I could start all over right from scratch, that's where we need help, right? Because Janet knows this world inside and out, I'm looking at Tess, has capacity to help us with this too, as housing and homelessness liaison, but frankly, until we get some of these purchase agreements in place, we have no site control to really do any projects, right? We, we need that, we need the ability to own that land to sort of kick it off. Could a project manager help? Absolutely. I also think that, you know, there's, there's a transition element where anybody that comes in is going to be relying on, you know, Janet, Brian, all the other people, so, the capacity is, comes in waves, right? It's not, it's not going to be felt right away. Anybody who starts is going to have to get caught up anyway and rely on people like Brian and Janet with some of the specialized knowledge, so, it won't, we won't necessarily realize it right away. Those are just some of my initial thoughts, like, like I said, my real big thing is, we should hire like two people in the planning department, and then Janet could help coordinate this grant, but that would also take time to train that, those two people, so, I don't think that was a helpful answer, Counsel Stockwell, but that's, that's my unfiltered thoughts right there.
Thank you.
Got some ideas. I think we can do this, I know we can. It's gonna, we're going to have to think a little bit outside the box, step outside our comfort zone, and then win. Simple as that. So, I appreciate you gentlemen. Counsel, any last questions from you? Appreciate you and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so, something occurred to me, so we, at Counsel Spalding's request, we dropped the $100 fee from the connection. I think about things as the meeting goes on, we didn't change anything, people can still connect into the storm system, they just get to do it for free. So, I guess I question the wisdom of charging nothing as opposed, and at least getting, charging $100 as recommended by the manager and at least getting something? I'm not aware, is Brian, Brian's probably not.
He's not.
Yeah, we could probably get an update by next week, I'm not aware of any big pending projects that are going to connect to the storm system in the next 60 days, but, but it just occurred to me that by getting rid of the fee, we get, if someone did connect into it in the next 30 days, we don't get anything. They still get to connect, but they get it for free, as opposed to revisiting it. I think I understand your question, should there be different levels, and should it be 500 instead of 100? But until we revisit it, it's, and it takes 30 days to effect, it's going to be zero.
I, I understand that, I think that there's more to the conversation than just the fee, because I want to understand are other communities doing this, and what are they charging, and what are the ramifications of it? Because for us to just change it, and this has been our practice, I'm curious what that, what does that all mean? And to Counsel Dearing's point, you know, we're charging $2,000 to hook up a sewer, for sewer hookup, but we're charging $100 for stormwater, so, yeah, there, there's, it just seems like there, it, we should have a bigger discussion. If you want to have it next week, I'm fine with that, but I think.
Have a what?
A bigger discussion.
Oh, I, I think we need to have a bigger discussion so that we, we understand it, but it just occurred to me that all we've really done is, is set it, it's free.
Well, maybe for the next week.
No, it's a, it's a, there's an implementation process for the.
But if we just set, if we just push it off for a week and have a conversation.
Well, that would be, so we could have it, you want to put it on the agenda for two weeks?
Sure. Well, I have another question about that as well.
Go ahead.
So, our next meeting is scheduled for June 18th, which is also the day of the BUSD budget vote, and I'm assuming our city clerk will be at that.
We usually, historically, anytime there's a vote, we push it back one day, so that we're, we do Monday, yeah, we do Monday evening, so, if there's no objection from the council, I'll consider that consent to schedule the meeting for Monday, the same time, 6:00 P.M.
Council meeting.
Council meeting, yeah, we, we generally, if there's an election, school, city, otherwise in matter, we, we just generally don't meet on the same day as an election. Okay, so we'll do that, because you'll be busy, so you won't be here, no one will be here to take minutes. And then, like I said, I will be calling a meeting for next Tuesday, the purpose of the meeting is to talk about exactly, I mean, I want to make sure the council fully understands the scope. We started talking about the Vermont Emergency Management Grants, is what these gentlemen were referring to today, I'll make sure that you have complete materials, a lot of you asked questions in terms of what was eligible, that information is available on the Vermont Emergency Management webpage, I'll make sure you get it, I'll get it in front of you, and I just want to make sure we have a thoughtful discussion about what the city's priorities are with regard to applying for the, these grants, because they will be, you know, they will be significant, I was partly in jest, I mean, they won't total $90 million, but they're, you know, they're, they're probably going to be pretty significant. And I do want to talk about capacity, I've been speaking a bit with the city manager about capacity and how we perhaps build more capacity into our grant writing ability and our project management capability. I absolutely believe we need a master plan for the North End, and I think we need a master plan sooner rather than later, that would dovetail with some of these mitigation projects, and also dovetail with rebuilding efforts in the North End, so, you know, I, I hope all of you found last Tuesday's meeting, which was a little more informal, I thought, I hope you found it informative and, and worthwhile, I did, to just be able to listen to people about what their ideas are, so, I just thought we'd continue doing it unless there's, well, I'm calling a meeting, and, you know, if some of you can't make it, I understand. So, I'll get the agenda out. Is there anything else that I should be aware of, under, yes, ma'am?
Uh, no, that was me.
Oh, sir, excuse me, and sorry, Ellen, old habits really die hard.
So, I had already told the mayor and the manager that I'm unavailable next Tuesday, 11th.
You told me that.
Yeah, yeah, I have a prior commitment, it's for a good reason, it's a community fundraiser, but I committed to it because it was an off week, so, you know, mayor's prerogative to call the special meetings, but it would be very helpful to know, because I fully agree with you, there's no shortage of work for the council to do, if you intend on continuing essentially weekly council meetings, even if the format week to week looks different, just so that way I can plan ahead, schedule.
Yeah, I, I mean, I do, I, look, I'm not, I'm not looking to have the council hate me, but there is a lot of work to do, and these meetings, I, I just find, you know, a forum where you can listen a little bit more, and, you know, some might call it spitballing, some might call it brainstorming, but, you know, there, there was definitely some value, as far as I'm concerned, in the meeting that we had last Tuesday. If Nicholas attends the next meeting, I don't want him spending, I realize that council meetings can just suck the wind right out of Monday. I'm not interested in doing that, I think we're all, we're all familiar enough with the issues, we're all familiar enough with the challenges, I think we can sit in a room and prioritize them with a little bit of help from Nicholas and not a ton of preparation.
Yeah, no, and I, and I agree on minimizing the, so just like, to be clear, I'm happy to come in every Tuesday, that's fine, I just need to know, because I typically schedule things two, three weeks out, and, so I fully agree on minimize the preparation, and I also think we're having so much conversation about staff capacity and grant writing, that the manager or assistant man, the city manager, their participation in these meetings is just absolutely.
Counsel Stockwell?
Similar to Teddy, I'm just worried, do we have the right people for these brainstorming sessions? Do we need Tess there? I think we need Nicholas there, if we're talking about the capacity of the staff, we need some staff representative there. We're talking about what the needs are, who else do we need to table? It just seems to me like, we can do this meeting, that's fine, it has some values, but do we have the right people there? It seems to me we need to be broader and not narrower.
I'll have the people there we need. If you, if you feel otherwise, let me know who you'd like to attend.
Okay, thanks.
I would just like it if whoever has PowerPoints or presentations next week, that they just provide them ahead of time. I know that, for me, it's kind of difficult to kind of get things right on point at times, so it's nice to be able to look at presentations ahead of time, so it would just be helpful, and I know that the public would also like to see those things, so, and really in transparency as well.
Anyone else? I just, I just want to make sure, I mean, I heard you speaking, the comment that you made relative to Janet's office, I mean, it's, my understanding is that in terms of the grants that you and I have spoken about, we simply do not have additional staff capacity to complete those. That doesn't mean that staff won't work on them, I mean, obviously, if you're talking about infrastructure, Brian's going to be a part, Brian Baker will be a, certainly a part of that discussion, as will you, but the two of you will not necessarily be writing the grant, and that's where we lack the capacity.
It may, yeah, the, the, the grant writing itself, a lot of these grants are fill-in forms, like, I, I just did the auditorium grant myself in 35 minutes, right? Like, that's, that wasn't, that wasn't a huge lift itself to do the form. What took work ahead of time, which luckily I didn't have to do, but somebody did at some point, was the application to Senator Sanders' office, which created the budget and. the application to Senator Sanders' office, which created the budget and created the, you know, the narrative and all that. Um, those kinds of things um, do, you know, it it's, it's difficult for them to happen without myself, without Janet, without Brian being very involved in them just because of the the detailed nature of what they do. So, so basically, you know, the right person to be doing it, doing these grants, these uh, these hazard mitigation grants, myself, Janet, and Brian, that, those are the people who, who have the, you know, the, the knowledge of the city and less me and more of them. So that was, that was the only, you know, that, that's basically, they're, they're the right people. What I would love is to free them up by them having people to do the things and, that they're doing on a day-to-day basis that, that sort of is above their, or below their, their, their day-to-day tasks. So um, they're still gonna have to be very integrally involved, just because, you know, Janet holds a lot of knowledge that I don't have, um, that somebody may not walk in with, and same, same thing with Brian.
Yes, sir. Exactly. And you've been, it's not for a lack of trying, because you've been trying for three years to get someone in Janet's office.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so counsel, any, um, any upcoming business that you would like to see on the agenda? Other than a discussion about stormwater connections? And how they fit into flood mitigation? Okay, then counsel, we are at roundtable, Counsel Jean Bell?
Pass.
Counsel Spalding?
Um, a couple of things, um, as Burn Rose indicated, the uh, Berry Unified Union School District budget vote is on June eighteenth. Absentee ballots, if you had requested them, have already gone out, I got mine, my whole family got ours. Um, but I would encourage everyone to um, request one if you are not able to vote in person. Um, it's very simple and easy, and you can drop them off, you don't even have to get out of your car, um, right in the back, it's amazing. Um, and I was wondering about the sign at the Civic Center, is there, automatically get updated so we can remind people of the vote?
We do it, Counsel Spalding, we do it, I'll make sure that they're aware to change it. I don't know if there's a rule about how soon it can go up, but I'll make sure it's, it gets updated there.
Perfect, thank you, and um, in honor of June being Pride Month, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Pride night, that's all.
Thank you, Counsel Wazazak?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, a couple of things, it was uh, very good to join the Memorial Day celebration on the thirtieth, uh, along with Counselor Guston, Counselor Deering, um, the mayor, and Representative Peter Anthony was there representing the city. Um, and also looking forward to this Saturday, jumping off of Counselor Spalding's point, uh, this Saturday is Pride in Berry. There is a whole slew of events happening throughout the entire city all day long. Um, so looking forward to joining those festivities as well. Um, and the fundraiser I'm joining next week is a fundraiser for the Berry Lions, they're doing a disc golf tournament uh, up at the quarries, and I, you know, I wouldn't be true to myself if I didn't do a Berry Disc Golf Tournament. Uh, so that's where I'll be next week, supporting a great org that does a lot of good work in the city, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Counsel Stockwell?
I was in Bar Harbor recently, and there's a lovely shore, there was a lovely shore path there. And I knew that there had been floods in, in January, and I thought, well, you know, it's still walkable, it's not. And they're rebuilding it, which is great, but I was just thinking about the roads in Berry City and, and the flood mitigation and how real it is and how it's not going away. And with that, I'll say happy Pride, hope to see everybody Saturday.
Counsel Guston?
Uh, certainly, two things, um, first, I'm grateful to State's Attorney Michelle Donnelly, who I had a really good long lunch with uh, last Friday, and who invited me into the office to tour the office, um, watch court proceedings and sort of better, better understand um, the way the court system operates in Washington County broadly and and in Berry City particularly. Um, so grateful to her continued friendship and conversation around that. And also, I was glad to attend the opening of a new business downtown, Slope Exchange, um, this past Sunday. Uh, people should go check it out, the top I'm wearing tonight, I got on Sunday, um, at the opening, so I'm already putting things into effect. Uh, I'm just uh, really glad to see that, uh, that new business here in Berry City.
Counsel Deering?
Uh, just a plug for uh, BUUSD, uh, not only the budget vote, um, but also, uh, we need volunteers for the Field Day. Um, you're all more than welcome to apply to come and help out on Field Day. Uh, this is uh, June thirteenth, uh, and it is going to be one heck of an event. Uh, it was a blast last year, uh, and really, uh, it's one of those events where we're kind of asking people to put their money where their mouth is. Uh, we need people to step up and be leaders in our community, uh, and it's just one event. So June thirteenth, if any of you are available, if you know anybody that's available, um, contact, you can either reach out to me or directly to Brenda Waterhouse, uh, the principal at Berry City School.
Thank you. Uh, I don't need, we do not need an executive session, correct?
Nope, not today.
And a motion to adjourn would be in order in a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned, thank you very much, folks.
Night, everyone.
Good night, all.